All right, good morning, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, October 6, 2025. It is 9:00 a.m. All council members are present, including town manager, deputy town manager, town attorney, and town clerk. If you'll please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Be with us today as we ask your hand of blessing on this meeting. As we consider and take actions today, help us arrive at decisions that are thoughtful, respectful, and well-informed. Thank you for the solemn honor of serving the public in our roles, and continue to bless all those fortunate enough to live here, work here, or visit here. Amen.
No flag.
Missing the flag.
It's okay.
Someone pull one up on their phone or something. How are we missing the flag?
Where did our flag go?
We'll just put one on the phone.
Just pledge.
I don't know. I've never been in this. There we go. All right, here's the one over here. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Effort was there. Effort was there. Well, let's hope the meeting goes a little better than that today. All right, next we have the approval of the final agenda. We do have an updated ordinance, a resolution for the school board, or the school district issue. If anyone out there, we just got it this morning. If anyone needs it, they can reach out to the town clerk. She can, is it on?
It is. Mayor, it is under Town Attorney Items, Item C.
Thank you for that. Are there any other changes to the final agenda?
Move to approve the final agenda.
All right. Good motion by Counselor King.
Second.
Second by Counselor Woodson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done, that motion carries unanimously. Next is public comment. Madam Court?
Oops, sorry. I have a couple signed up. First up is Michelle Churney. After Michelle will be Joy Sullivan.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning, mayor.
Good morning.
I'm Michelle Churney, and I've served on BORCAB for the last year, and I'm here today to ask to continue serving. I'm at Bay Oaks almost every day, as they all know. I play pickleball, I talk with residents, I learn, I listen. And believe me, when they find out you're on BORCAB, they give you feedback. So I want to take a moment and say this is the feedback we have. The gym, we've got to get it open after hours and weekends. The pickleball layout, we were all excited to get four courts. The court challenged, and the courts changed in their layout. I beg us to look at the current layout and move it back to the original one. The pool, sad to say, I heard it again, we didn't get enough bids. This is an issue we continuously have. We don't get bids. It's a pool. We live in Florida. Everyone wants this pool open. We need to get sun protection out on the gym that's out in the sterile. We live in Florida with the sun. We've got to get some type of protection over that. And we need to find ways to get additional funding. We need to look at the dues. I've benchmarked other facilities, and there is opportunity with fees. We need to look at them again, especially with our current budget restraints. I'd like a recommendation from the staff. Well, thank you for attending our last meeting. I think all advisory boards should come in front of you at least quarterly, maybe biannually, and give updates of what we hear, and make sure that that whole connection of what's happening happens. So I'd like to put that request into you. My biggest accomplishment this year, I'm proud to announce that the Friends of Bay Oaks is back up and running with the support and help of Karen. She's been on BORCAB for many years. She's also on Lover's Key, Friends of Lover's Key. But as of last week, we officially have a board with a lot of experience, and we will soon have eighteen thousand, over eighteen thousand dollars in our checking account soon as we get the check back from the town. So we are very excited. You're going to start seeing, we've got marketing, we've got financial people on there, and we're going to be up and running. So we're excited about that. I'm in closing, I love this community, and I volunteer wherever I can, whether it's beautification, helping with the egg hunt, and I hope I can continue to help on BORCAB. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Michelle.
Joy Sullivan. After Joy will be Jane Plummer.
Wow, that was a hard act to follow. Thank you. This is Joy Sullivan. Thank you for the opportunity to serve on the Bay Oaks Advisory Board. As some of you know, I'm an active participant. Pickleball, softball, exercise classes, and I think I can represent a segment of the island community. Even though an advisory does not have decision-making responsibilities, I think we can offer a user point of view to staff. I encourage the Bay Oaks staff to use the advisory board for input into the future of Bay Oaks. I also ask that you approve my appointment to the board. And Michelle. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Jane Plummer. And after Jane will be Anita Saraceta.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. Good morning, counsel. I just want to say that I have loved being on the LPA. I may be the longest one serving, but I really have gained a lot of knowledge, and the time and the history that I have put in has helped me in my business, in my understanding of what goes on in this town, and how much I love serving. I do think the LPA that we have right now has been the best LPA that we've ever had. I think they function well. We all have differences of opinions. We come in with an open mind, and we all work well together. I would really like to ask that you reappoint the board that has all put in their applications to be reappointed. Thank you.
Anita Saraceta, and then that's all I have signed up. You have to push the button on the mic.
Nope, just push it.
Thank goodness. Good morning, counsel. I'm Anita Saraceta for the record, and I have reapplied for the LPA, and I ask for your consideration, but that's not what I wish to speak about. I want to kind of elaborate on what Jane just said, and it is the quality, the expertise, and the excellence of the LPA members. I have had the good fortune, or as Amy just said, the solemn honor of service. I loved that prayer, Amy, to serve on many boards, including this council. I don't think I have ever been a part of such an extraordinary group. Their life expertise that they bring, I'm excluding myself from this, so I'm not bragging on myself. I'm talking about somebody like Jim Dunlap, or Jim Bowen, or Jane Plummer, or Don Suddeth, or Doug Ekman. These folks are, or John McClain, they bring to the table their life experience, they bring to the table their preparation. Every single one of them are prepared for those meetings. They come with questions, but they come equally with an open mind. I've never worked with a group that I admire and respect more, and it has been my solemn honor to serve with them. I hope I get to continue, but if I don't, it was extraordinary. The other thing that I want to point out about this board is their compassion for the residents that come before us, for variances, for special exceptions, for whatever they need. When they come before us, there's a certain amount of anxiety and apprehension, as you all know, as you've all seen, people get nervous standing up here talking. There are very few people who like to do it, like I do. And the compassion that this board shows for those folks is really a step above. So I thank you very much, and I'd appreciate your consideration today.
Thanks, Anita.
That's all I have signed up.
Pat?
Good morning, Pavanas. Resident and resident with children on this island that have gone through beach school, and both had a great experience, and we all love the beach school, the kids, the families. So I'm here today to speak in favor of the resolution, this could be before you, to start legal action or mediation with the school board with regards to the interlocal agreement. I was part of the ad hoc committee that negotiated the reopening of the school after Ian. I can tell you that 100%, I feel that they are in breach of contract. They have not met their obligations, and also they have not treated us fairly and negotiated in good faith. And that's evidenced most recently by FEMA money that they requested to rebuild our school. It is clearly earmarked for our school. It has been used elsewhere, and they have provided no evidence that they requested FEMA to use those funds elsewhere. So I think we've put in our time, we have negotiated in good faith on our end, and this is the right time to take legal action. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Anyone else care to speak in public? Come on up.
Good morning.
Welcome back.
With Miss 99 Andre Marb, can I speak on the Beach Baptist Church?
Do you want, if you want your comments to be on record for that public hearing, then you'd want to speak during that public comment. You're welcome to speak both, but if you want a part of the record, you would have to do that during the hearing.
Okay, just as a, in a butter, I live on 99 Andre Marb, which is a sterile butt right next to the property.
You pull that mic up for us, just so they can hear you. Pull the mic up just a little bit.
Okay. Anyways, I just want to sit down and say I really have no objection to the project in general. I do see where they sent out information to us that the setbacks were going to be seven feet on all sides. They had a section on building setbacks, and I thought they were supposed to be 10 feet. They're putting, you know, 12 houses in here, and they're going to kind of squeeze them together, and I wish I could get seven feet, living next door. These setbacks, you know, we all deal with them, I guess, as we're sitting here trying to rebuild. But I just wanted to sit there and bring it up to everyone's notice that seven feet's a little small for the town, which demands ten. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in public comment? We see none, we'll close public comment. Next is local achievements and recognitions. Counselor King, start with you.
I have nothing.
What's matter?
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but Patrick brought up a sensitive issue, and it's on the agenda for much later today, so we'll probably lose a lot of our audience by the time it comes up. And I would just say, under the Attorney Items, there is a proposed resolution beginning the litigation, if you will, the nicer word is mediation process, with Lee County School District. And I would just say, if I could respectfully, to the Lee County Superintendent of Public Schools, you know, really is this necessary? We have met in good faith since right after the storm, for the last three years, we had established a decent working relationship with the ILA. Hurricane Milton hit, and it's been, and it feels as if all of our input has fallen on deaf ears since then. The kids are obviously not back at the school. There's no plan to have them back at the school. There's no plan for the school. I would just say respectfully to our Lee County Superintendent, the school board members, the elected school board members, many of whom have been very helpful to us, but the administration, for whatever reason, sort of fails to appreciate what this school means to Fort Myers Beach. They fail to appreciate that Fort Myers Beach is, and I say this in a very positive way, is the playground for all of Lee County. We don't have a toll to come to our beach. We have 30-some public access, opportunities for our beach. We, I don't want to say gleefully put up with the traffic, but we suffer the traffic, but we understand and are welcoming to our visitors. Many of the folks in Lee County utilize our beaches, and we're thankful for that. We generate a lot of revenue for Lee County. The people of Lee County, I believe, are good people. They've seen what Fort Myers Beach has been through over the last three years. They've seen it firsthand. Many of them experience similar impacts, and I think they've got a heart for Fort Myers Beach. So there's, I don't, we cannot understand the downside for you to help us. The revenue we generate will more than cover whatever costs are to rebuild here on Fort Myers Beach. We've demonstrated that we can boost our enrollment. We've done everything you've asked in the ILA, but yet our pleas fall on deaf ears. I would just say again respectfully to the superintendent, please lead or follow the elected school board and get out of the way. We need your help. We need our school back. Thank you.
Counselor Woodson?
I have nothing. I have nothing except very well said by Vice Mayor Adderhold.
Counselor Safrid?
Ditto.
Yeah, you're much nicer than I would have been, but I'm glad you said it, not me. For now.
Fair enough.
All right. That'll take us to our advisory committee items and reports. Our first is the local planning agency. We have four members that are applying for three positions. Does, Amy?
Mayor, may I say something before we start this? And Jason's getting in there with the ballot. On October 22nd, we're going to hold an all-committee sunshine law and public records training, and it will be here in council chambers from 10:00 to noon. Once again, that is October 22nd.
And that's for all committees?
It's for all committees, all at the same time. We will record it, we will broadcast it too, so.
All right. Waiting on Jason?
You should have had ballots in your.
We do. Why, would you want us to wait for Jason, or go ahead?
He's ready.
Oh, he's ready?
Yep.
Oh, okay. So you want us to fill these out and give them back to you then?
Yes, please.
Got it.
Just the LPA.
And thank you again for all four of you for putting your name in. We've got, it's nice when we have four highly qualified candidates that want to serve on such an important board.
Ready, Jason? Okay. All right. This is Mayor Allers. This is for James Bowen, Anita Saraceta, and Jane Plummer. John King is James Bowen, Jane Plummer, and Edward Schoonover. Karen Woodson, James Bowen, Jane Plummer, and Edward Schoonover. Vice Mayor Adderhold, James Bowen, Anita Saraceta, Jane Plummer. And Scott Safrid, James Bowen, Anita Saraceta, Jane Plummer. Okay, so with five votes is James Bowen. Anita Saraceta has three votes, and Jane Plummer has five, so those look like your top three. Edward Schoonover received two.
All right. Well, congratulations to those three. Thank you, Ed, for putting your name in for that. Do you want us to do the waiver? Do them all at the end for the people that would need the waiver to be on more than one board?
It's at your discretion. However, if we could go ahead and take a vote on the appointment for the LPA?
Okay.
And then we don't have to come back to that.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the results that have been written?
So moved.
Got it. Thank you, John. I will second. Any further discussion? You want roll call, or do you want? No. Roll call, okay. Counselor King?
Aye.
Mayor Allers is an aye. Vice Mayor Adderhold?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
And Counselor Safrid?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll just do the waivers at the end, if that's okay? Just make it simpler, in case there's more than one. Next is the Anchorage Advisory Committee. There are two people on for three positions, Chris King and Ed Schoonover. Not a lot of suspense on this one.
Let me get my steps in.
Okay. Mayor Allers, Chris King, and Ed Schoonover. Scott Safrid, Chris King, and Ed Schoonover. Karen Woodson, Chris King, and Ed Schoonover. John King, Chris King, and Ed Schoonover. And Vice Mayor Adderhold, Chris King, and Ed Schoonover. So with a vote of five each, it would be Chris King and Ed Schoonover.
All right. Is there a motion to certify the results?
An appoint.
Huh? And appoint.
So moved.
Okay. I'll second.
So I can go home tonight.
The meeting ain't over yet, John. Got a motion by Counselor King, seconded by Mayor Allers. Any further discussion? Counselor King?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Vice Mayor Adderhold?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Counselor Safrid?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is the Audit Committee. There are two names for three positions, Barbara Puffer and Mary Ann Shealy. Hope I didn't butcher your first name. The suspense continues.
Okay. Mayor Allers is Barbara Puffer and Mary Ann Shealy. John King, Barbara Puffer, Mary Ann Shealy. Vice Mayor Adderhold, Barbara Puffer, Mary Ann Shealy. Karen Woodson, Barbara Puffer, Mary Ann Shealy. And Scott Safrid, Barbara Puffer, and Mary Ann Shealy.
Is there a motion to approve and appoint?
Certify.
Certify. What do you want me to say? Certify and what?
Appoint.
Certify and appoint.
So moved.
All right. Counselor King made the motion. I'll second. Any further discussion? Counselor King?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Vice Mayor Adderhold?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Counselor Safrid?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is Bay Oaks BORCAB, Bay Oaks recreational campus advisory board. There are five names for five open seats. Michelle Churney, Barbara Hill, Rick Lowry, Anne Neef, and Joy Sullivan.
Okay. Mayor Allers, Michelle Churney, Barbara Hill, Rick Lowry, Anne Neef, and Joy Sullivan. Scott Safrid, Michelle Churney, Barbara Hill, Rick Lowry, Anne Neef, and Joy Sullivan. Karen Woodson, Michelle Churney, Barbara Hill, Rick Lowry, Anne Neef, and Joy Sullivan. Vice Mayor Adderhold, Michelle Churney, Barbara Hill, Rick Lowry, Anne Neef, and Joy Sullivan. And John King, Michelle Churney, Barbara Hill, Rick Lowry, Anne Neef, and Joy Sullivan. So with a vote of five for each of the candidates, they're all first.
All right. Is there a motion to certify and appoint the members selected for BORCAB?
I'll move that, Mayor.
I'll second.
Motion by Counselor King, seconded by Counselor Woodson. Any further discussion? Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Counselor Safrid?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adderhold?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That motion carries unanimously. Next, we have SELcab. There are five members applying for four spots. Frances Davy, Natalie De La Torre Salas, hope I didn't butcher your last name, Ellen Vaughn, Rebecca Werner, and Lori Wolfe. Guess I need to fold it.
Okay. Mayor Allers, Natalie De La Torre Salas, Ellen Vaughn, Rebecca Werner, and Lori Wolfe. John King, Ellen Vaughn, Rebecca Werner, and Lori Wolfe. Karen Woodson, Frances Davy, Ellen Vaughn, Rebecca Werner, and Lori Wolfe. Vice Mayor Adderhold, Frances Davy, Natalie De La Torre Salas, Ellen Vaughn, Rebecca Werner. And Scott Safrid, Natalie De La Torre Salas, Ellen Vaughn, Rebecca Werner, and Lori Wolfe. Okay, so with a vote of five each, it would be Ellen Vaughn and Rebecca Werner, then Lori Wolfe with four votes, Natalie De La Torre Salas with three votes, and Frances Davy with two. So it'd be Ms. Salas, Ellen Vaughn, Rebecca Werner, and Lori Wolfe.
Is there a motion to certify and appoint the members selected for SELcab?
So moved.
Got a motion by Counselor.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Safrid. Any further discussion? Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Safrid?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adderhold?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That motion carries unanimously. Next is MRF. There are three open spots and two people applying, William Althoff and Dave Nussbaum.
That is a typo.
Yeah.
It is Althoff.
That's why.
That's where you stumbled?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Allers is William Althoff and Dave Nussbaum. Vice Mayor Adderhold, William Althoff and Dave Nussbaum. John King, William Althoff, Dave Nussbaum. Karen Woodson, William Althoff, Dave Nussbaum. And Scott Safrid, William Althoff and Dave Nussbaum.
All right. Is there a motion to certify and appoint those selected for MRF?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor King, seconded by Counselor Safrid. Any further discussion? Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Safrid?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adderhold?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That motion carries unanimously. Next is the Public Safety Committee. There are four open seats and only one applicant, Ron Bennick.
All right. Scott Safrid, Ron Bennick. Karen Woodson, Ron Bennick. Mayor Allers, Ron Bennick. Vice Mayor Adderhold, Ron Bennick. And John King, Ron Bennick.
All right. Is there a motion to certify and appoint Mr. Bennick to the Public Safety Committee?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Counselor King, seconded by Counselor Safrid. Any further discussion? Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Safrid?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adderhold?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That motion carries unanimously. Nancy, can we do all of these, since all four of them are going to need the waiver?
Yes. As long as you read all the names, you'll be fine.
Those appointed to more than one advisory committee need a waiver to serve on both boards. The four names would be Anita Saraceta, Michelle Churney, Barbara Hill, and Ed Schoonover. Is there a motion to grant the waiver for all four named for the two committees?
I'll make that motion, Mayor. I'll second.
Motion by Counselor King, seconded by Counselor Safrid. Any further discussion? Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Safrid?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adderhold?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That motion carries unanimously. Again, thank you all for applying and serving. It means a lot to all of us. We've all been in a lot of those seats, so we appreciate your time to donate. Next is the approval of the minutes from the Town Council meeting September 24, 2025, and the Town Council budget hearing from September 24, 2025. Are there any amendments or a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Move to approve as printed.
All right. Motion by Counselor King?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Safrid. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing done, that motion carries unanimously. Next is our consent agenda. We have three items, all pertaining to tropical storms or hurricanes. I read those.
Oh, you didn't?
Yeah.
Sorry. Never mind.
Yeah, that's your preliminary.
Never mind. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's your preliminary.
Never mind, yeah, okay.
The first is Resolution 25-281 through 25-284 for an extension of local emergency for Tropical Storm Debbie. The second one is Resolution 25-285 through 25-288 for the extension of local emergency for Tropical Storm Helene. And Resolution 25-289 through 25-292 for the extension of local emergency Tropical Storm Milton. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move, Mayor.
A motion by Councilor King?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Woodson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. That brings us to our items removed from consent agenda. Nothing was removed. Next are our public hearings. The next. The next five items on our agenda are public hearings for the review of various land use requests. For the benefit of the public, please be aware that these items are quasi-judicial in nature. Our attorney will further explain.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, everyone. These land use applications that are before council today, they are quasi-judicial in nature. And this requires that their public hearing comply with procedural requirements that have been established in Florida law and in the town's land development code. So these quasi-judicial proceedings, they are less formal than a proceeding before Circuit Court, but they are more formal than the remainder of our meeting. And we must follow basic standards of due process that require certain notices. We must apply the correct standards based on our land development code and Florida law. And the decisions must be made on competent and substantial evidence that's provided to the Town Council, either in written documents or through oral testimony. The Town Council will evaluate the testimony and the information for each item and draw a conclusion regarding whether the criteria in the land development code or in state law has been satisfied. So pure speculation or opinion that is not based on competent facts cannot legally be considered by the Town Council in evaluating an agenda item. Testimony by professionals who have been qualified as experts in a particular area has been considered competent evidence by Florida courts, as well as testimony by neighbors and residents who have fact-based information such as minutes, surveys, engineering reports, or just testimony that is based on their personal knowledge. The Town Council's decision is final. If a decision of approval is not obtained, or if the tie vote results from a motion to approve or deny, then the matter being considered is denied unless the majority of the council present in voting agree by motion before the next agenda item is called to take some other action in lieu of denial. So if you intend to speak, members of the public and staff, please keep these comments in mind. When you come forward, please state your name clearly for the record, and whether or not you have been sworn in, and your qualifications or your interest in the matter. For purposes of efficiency, before beginning any of our public hearings, I would like to dispose of a few housekeeping items. The first is, Town Clerk, could you advise if all items have been properly noticed pursuant to our land development code?
Yes, they have been.
And is there any member of the Town Council that has a conflict of interest that would prohibit them from voting on any of these items? If you could please disclose that at this time so we can ascertain whether or not we have a quorum present to take action on that item.
Councilor Safford?
I do not.
Councilor Woodson?
I do have a question. Since this is one of the items on my recall with the pier, should I abstain because it is still in litigation?
Well, the request is, you're not going to receive any type of benefit based on your decision today.
Right.
Any special benefit that is unique to you, that is not shared by any other member of the public. So I, in my opinion, I don't think you have a conflict, and I think you would be okay to vote on them.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Adherhold?
None.
Councilor King?
No conflict.
I do not have any.
Okay. So at this time, we would like to go ahead, and anyone who intends to give testimony, if you would stand and raise your right hand, and our Town Clerk will administer an oath.
And that would include public com-- oh, sorry. That would include public comment. Do you solemnly swear and affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Mayor, if I'd like to just go ahead and point out also that Item F on our agenda is actually legislative rather than quasi-judicial, so we're going to be a little bit less formal in that public hearing.
Yep. All right, the first quasi-judicial item is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving, approving with conditions, denying a special exception, SEZ 202-50208 to allow reconstruction of the pier with elevated walkways, lighting, and easy zoning districts seaward of the 1978 CCCL for the property located at County RW as legally recorded in Platt Book 9, Page 9, extension of Old San Carlos Boulevard. In public record, Lee County, Florida, providing for Scrivener's areas severability and effective date. Take it away.
Good morning, councilors, staff. My name is Jason Smalley. I'm your senior planner with the Planning and Zoning Department. Before you today, as the mayor just mentioned, is the first reading before Town Council of the rebuild of the pier. The pier was obviously largely damaged and then ultimately destroyed by the storm. And then following the storm, demolition happened. The rebuild of it is coming back before you. There are going to be some upgrades to it. I'd like to briefly go through this, just on what the high points of that are. And then staff and county staff will be here for any questions on this one. Just as a reminder, there will be a second reading for the county after this on a different project. So before you today is the rebuild of approximately a 12-foot wide pier. That comes out to roughly 16,000 square feet is being proposed for rebuild. And that's going to include three shade structures, a fish cleaning station, and lighting. So the rebuild of the existing, or excuse me, the rebuild of the pier will be slightly higher, it'll be wider. It will be approximately 1,000 feet long. So the reason that is before you today is because the pier, while it is within the jurisdiction of the county, it is ultimately their pier, it does cross our EC. So it is within our jurisdiction. And before you today is really the request to allow for the development within that area, respecting the dunes, and with some conditions of approval. The, I wanted to make sure that you were aware that the LPA had recommended that the condition number four in the staff report be removed. That is a request to allow them to do work during turtle season. They will be required to get all state permitting. They will have to do the monitoring that the state would require in conjunction with Chad and our environmental regulations. But that is something that they have requested, and seemingly the state will allow them to do that. We did want to mention that it will be the responsibility of the county and their contractor to ensure that they're doing the daily monitoring that is going to be required by the town and by the state's ultimate authority to allow them to do this during turtle season. The staff, as we said at LPA, we believe that this is in concurrence with the comprehensive plan. It's intended, they are rebuilding it to the EC requirements that we have, where it's making it as close to the CCCL line as possible. Obviously, this is a 1,000-foot-long pier. So their beginning portion will happen as close to the CCCL as possible. And they have made assurances that they will work with us and Chad as the dune plantings. And any sand placement has to be done during their project. As I said, the applicant does have representation here, but staff is open to any questions or comments that you may have for us.
Councilor Safford, questions for Jason?
I do not at this time.
Councilor Woodson?
Not at this time.
Vice Mayor Adherhold?
Good morning, Jason.
Could you introduce your colleagues from the county this morning?
I have not, but I would encourage them to come on up and if they would like to introduce themselves prior to any questions that you may have. We've got excellent representation from the county today.
Good morning, council, staff. Robert Cody, Assistant County Manager. And I'll be followed up by Ehab Gerges.
Good morning. Ehab Gerges, Construction and Management Director for Lee County.
Good morning, everybody.
Lee County Parks and Recreation Backyard.
Good morning. I'm Chris Galash with Stantec, the engineer for Lee County.
You're good. Thank you guys for coming.
Yeah, good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here. Thank you for, you brought the senior team, and I appreciate that very much. Mr. Cody, if you could, I think you're probably the best person to answer this. Maybe not, feel free to defer. Going to ask you some pretty simple questions, but I think they're helpful for the record.
Hold on. Vice Mayor, if you don't mind, let's make sure we don't have, and I don't think you guys were sworn in.
We were not.
I didn't see you stand up, so I'm going to have you get sworn in. I didn't see you stand up, I figured you probably should, just in case.
Okay, you'll raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Just before we finish, make sure that John doesn't have any questions for Jason and Jason.
However, you want to.
Sure.
I'm good.
All right. Just a formality, just want to make sure we're done with that. Take it away.
Mr. Cody, again, thanks for being here again this morning. You've been extremely helpful to our island over the years, and it's good to have you here this morning. Mr. Cody, who made the formal, or informal, who made the determination as to whether the pier would be rebuilt or not?
Well, the pier was never, it was never considered not to be rebuilt. Our intent was always to bring back the pier due to the joy, the beautification, and the positive energy that it gives to this community and our county as a whole. So it was never considered not to be rebuilt.
That's a beautiful statement, and I welcome that and appreciate that. But who did make that determination? Who's the formal body that makes that determination?
Well, county leadership, our commissioners. As soon as it was, just to expound upon that for a second, that pier was going to be rebuilt. It was just more so how we were going to build the pier.
But it was the Lee County Commissioners who solely were responsible for making that decision. Is that fair?
That is not fair.
Keep going.
It's a community pier. It's a county pier. It's everyone in totality. It's a voice of the community. I would be remiss if I said it was just our commissioners.
No, 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 I don't mean it. I just meant from a legal, practical standpoint, from a procedural standpoint. It's the Lee County Commissioners who made that decision?
From a procedural standpoint, in my role, our Board of County Commissioners and our leadership decided to build that pier.
Who was responsible for the formal decision on the designed length and width of the pier?
It was community effort. It was the community, once we decided to rebuild the pier, and we started asking, what did the community want? And it was many stakeholders that we received information and feedback from within Fort Myers Beach that emailed us, that communicated with us, that said this pier was one of the smaller piers in our state. How could we rebuild and have that landmark pier in this community? And then when we started having conversations about rebuilding the pier, everyone's advice, everyone's knowledge and expertise were taken into consideration. It was not a sole individual. It was truly a community effort.
Who ultimately made the formal decision?
Well, we presented the pier designs to our board. We presented three options.
And you say board, could you elaborate?
Our Board of County Commissioners.
Yep. And they made the ultimate decision?
They made the ultimate decision to recommend the length and the widening of that pier.
Who made the ultimate decision to fund the rebuilding of the pier?
Well, funding is tricky, because when we look at it, there are multiple funding elements associated with the pier. So you have FEMA reimbursement, we actually have TDT involved, and we have some county funds. So it's a multifaceted approach when you look at the funding of the pier. It's not a single source.
Appreciate that. Who formally made that decision? Who was responsible for formally making a decision with respect to the funding of the pier and how it was funded?
Well, that would be a difficult point, because funding of this pier has been very difficult outside of its original footprint to which FEMA would reimburse us for. So we had to make requests to our tourist development council for funding for that pier. And ultimately, we had to understand what the total cost would be for that pier, and then work through the county for funding, so it's multifaceted.
But who made the, who made the formal, who cast the vote to determine the funding level for the rebuilding of the pier? Who was the entity that was responsible for deciding how and how much the pier was funded? The rebuilding of the pier? You may be overthinking the question a little bit.
No, staff makes recommendations based on what our funding allocations are.
And who ultimately makes the decision?
Well, if we don't have funding, if the TDT would not have accepted our item, then we would have had a funding shortfall, which ultimately would have taken out of consideration the cost and the rebuild of that.
Gotcha. But again, I think what I'm, I'm just trying to make this clear. So the county commissioners were the ones who ultimately were responsible for deciding how to fund the rebuilding of the Fort Myers Beach pier. Is that a fair characterization?
The county commissioners approve.
Yes.
The recommendation for funding. So staff, we create what we decide of our best practices and ways to fund the project. Our county commissioners approve it. So ultimately, we bring them suggestions and recommendations, and they approve the item.
And they, but they have the final decide, they're the final deciding authority. Is that fair?
They are our policymakers, correct.
Beautiful. That's all I've got. Thank you for being here this morning.
My pleasure.
Oh, hey, Mr. Cody, I have to digress for real quick. This is way off subject, but I was in, I was in Sarasota this weekend, and we were staying at Lido Key. And they have a trolley that runs, just like our trolley does here on Fort Myers Beach. It's a wonderful trolley, just like our trolley's wonderful, and you guys have done a great job in serving the beach. But they have an app for their trolley that where you could literally on your phone see where the trolley is. And one of our biggest challenges here on Fort Myers Beach is, for those who want to take the trolley, they're not sure if and when it's coming. And if they could have a similar app where you could actually see where the trolley was along its route, you could then know when to hop out of the store, or the bar, or your condo, or your home, and run out to Stero Boulevard and catch that trolley, and you maybe save yourself waiting for 30, 45 minutes. Have you ever seen or heard of such an app that does that? I saw it, my wife's got it on her phone. Pretty impressive, but just wanted to get your thoughts on that, if I could indulge my colleagues for a second.
No worries. Lee Tran actually does have an app. The only difficulties would be the tram, because of the seasonal services and open air. We're still trying to work to see how to connect the app to the tram service. But the trolleys and the fixed route, we have an app, and you can actually pay through the app to utilize the services. It's readily available right now as we speak. I would advise anyone to go on to Lee Tran's website, ride letran.com, and you can actually see the app, download the app. I believe it's available on all platforms. The tram, we're still working on the trams, because if you notice, we were able to upgrade it this past season and add a F-350 to pull the trailers. So we're looking forward to adding two more to those next season. But the tram, hopefully we'll have it ready, the app, when season starts in November, but we're still tinkering with it, so please don't hold me to that.
So on the trolley app, you can actually follow the trolley and know where exactly it is? So if you're at Santini Plaza, you'll know, you could see it's going to be there in five minutes by just following it on your app? Is that how it works?
I don't know if we have the map on there where you can follow the actual trolley, but it gives you the anticipated arrival times. But we're still tinkering with that as we speak.
Would you mind just taking a look at that Sarasota trolley that goes out to Lido Key and San Armand Circle and back and forth from Sarasota? Would you just take a look at that and see if there's anything there that, in terms of best practices, that could be explored?
Absolutely. We are always looking for ways to improve.
Beautiful, beautiful. Thanks for being with us this morning.
All right, any questions, John? Questions for the staff? Councilor Woodson?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilor Safford?
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for all your hard work, and Mr. Young, look forward to seeing you on Wednesday. All right, bring it back to council, or sorry, public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak in public comment on this Resolution 25-276? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Are there any additional comments or rebuttal from the closing statements from the applicant? I'm guessing probably not. I will now close the public hearing, request a discussion or a motion from Town Council to approve, approve with conditions, or deny with reasons, or a continuance to a time certain. Discussion or a motion? I will move to approve Resolution 25-276, SEZ 202-50208 for the fishing pier at County RW right-of-way in San Carlos, Lee County Pier.
I'll second.
I got a motion by Mayor Allers? Yes, sir.
The request was also to remove condition number four for prohibition of working during the turtle season. Is that also going to be part of your the turtle season, is that also going to be part of your...
I will, I will amend my motion to include that.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, thank you, Jason, for...
I'll amend my second.
All right, any further discussion? Counsel, I'm an aye, Counsel Safford?
Aye.
Counsel Woodson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erholt?
Aye.
And Counsel King?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you, gentlemen, looking forward to it. Next is Resolution 25-277, this is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving, approving with conditions, denying special exception, SEZ 20250217, to allow like-for-like replacement of boardwalks, paver deck, sidewalk, decking and benches in EC zoning district seaward of the 1978 CCCL, with the property located at 5058, 50-58 Estero Boulevard, commonly referred to as strap number 24-46-23-W1-0080D. dot zero four zero zero, providing for scribbled areas, severability, and an effective date. If any Town Council member has had any ex parte communication to discuss or disclose, please let us know the subject discussed and the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, any correspondence that you received, or observations made of the site. Counsel Safford?
I do not, I'm familiar with the property, however.
Counsel Woodson?
I have none.
Vice Mayor Erholt?
None.
Counsel King?
None.
None as well. Jason Smalley has been qualified as an expert already by this Town Council, based on his education and experience, has been accepted as an expert in the field of land use planning and development in the town of Fort Myers Beach. Are there any other individuals who would like to be qualified as an expert witness on behalf of the applicant at this time? And has the property owner or applicant seen a copy of the agenda backup materials from staff? Just need a head nod, yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay, go ahead, Jason.
Good morning, again, my name's Jason Smalley, Senior Planner here with the Planning and Zoning Department. As the mayor had mentioned, this is the second county project before you today, this one is in reference to Bowditch Park, this is a seventeen acre park, seven of which has been, has been developed. Just to put some numbers to what the mayor had mentioned in his introduction, they are, the county is requesting one hundred and seventy-nine feet of boardwalk be replaced, approximately sixteen hundred square feet of pavers and decking area, approximately thirteen hundred and seventy square feet of sidewalk, and seventy-five feet of boardwalk, decking, and beach access. So this is for repair within the existing footprint, we, we expect that the already developed area, the seven acres, is the scope of the work, and that the remainder of the seventeen acres will stay the way that it was prior to the storm. The infrastructure that is being requested to be rebuilt today did exist prior to the storm, we can confirm that through visiting the site prior to the storm, but also the aerials that are available to us from Lee Property Appraisers. So the, what they have proposed is generally within the existing footprint, we do expect that there will be some minor changes, just to make sure the ADA is respected, and other, and other issues are brought up to current code. Now, again, the county has requested, and they have been in contact with Chad, our Environmental Manager, and they are requesting to remove Condition of Approval Number Three in this staff report and this resolution, that was recommended for removal at LPA, but the applicant is here to discuss any requirements or any conditions that you would like to put on that or, or discuss today. If there's any questions for staff, any concerns, we're here for that, otherwise, the county and their staff is here for your questions.
Okay, Counsel Safford, any questions?
What specifically is, is the Condition Number Three?
Oh, I, I apologize, Condition Number Three, much like the previous pier discussion, was to remove the town's prohibition against doing work during turtle season. Again, the, the applicant, the county, will be responsible to have any monitoring that is, that is requested by either the state or through Chad and the environmental program, they will respect that, they will work closely with him, any plantings, any new sand dunes, or any new sand filling will also be done in conjunction with, with Chad, but what they're requesting is really to just go to the state and ultimately have the state allow them to do work during those protected turtle seasons.
I know you can't speak for Chad, but is, is it your thought that, that would be okay, from a town perspective?
I'll be honest with you, I have not discussed Bowditch, I've discussed the pier with him, so I do, I do not want to talk for him, but if he felt that this was something I have no, something of concern, I have no doubt that he would be here today making that case to you.
I would concur, thank you for clarification.
Counsel Woodson?
I'm good, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I would be remiss, since we have such a wonderful delegation from the county here, if, if you guys, gentlemen, would just look right behind you, you'll see a picture or a portrait of the arches, and I was wondering if anybody here could give us an update as to how the arches memorial is going.
Let's just finish with Jason, go ahead and start coming up, but again, I just want, John, you got any questions?
I have none, thank you.
All right, thanks, Jason, thank you.
Good morning, again, MacYon with Lee County Parks and Recreation, I can tell you guys that we are in conversation with the gentleman that is, what was his name again?
McDonald.
McDonald.
McDonald, yes, 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 and he's constantly communicating with us, month by month, phone calls, emails, so we are, we do have a location for it, we told him to just give us time to get Bowditch to a certain point, so we can get that location available and ready, so it will happen, so he's just taking a little bit more time than we expect.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Counsel King, any questions for Lee County staff?
None.
Counsel Woodson?
None, thank you.
Counsel Safford?
None, thank you.
All right, public comment, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this matter, if so, please come forward to the podium and identify yourself, provide your address, and whether you were sworn in. Any public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment, I'm guessing there's no additional comments from Lee County at this time, no rebuttal statement needed. I will now close the public hearing and request a discussion or a motion from Town Council to approve, approve with conditions, deny with reasons, or a continuance to a time certain. Any further discussion or motion?
I'll move Resolution 25-277 with the restriction removed for the construction during turtle, sea turtle season, is that what you want, Jason, in there?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, got a motion by Counsel King?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counsel Safford, any further discussion? Counsel King?
Aye.
Counsel Safford?
Aye.
Counsel Woodson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erholt?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, that motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, it's been brought to my attention that I think we skipped over ex parte on the prior public hearing, and that would have been just, just for purposes of record keeping, if council couldn't make any disclosures that they need to, the disclosures would simply be restricted to the county and you talking about this specific item, because I know over, over time, there's been a lot of conversations with the county, but it would only be regarding this, this item that you did approve.
Yeah, I remember that after I, we went through it, so, Counsel Safford, have you got any ex parte communications with Resolution 25-276?
I do not.
Counsel Woodson?
None.
Vice Mayor Erholt?
None, and I would just add that this is a, a very recent phenomenon, this particular resolution.
Counsel King?
None.
I don't know if it, I have had conversations with county commissioners about the pier project over the last three years, I don't know if that's...
Yeah, no, this specific item.
This specific one, okay, then, then no, I have not had any, any...
Because it's, it's a major project for, for the whole community, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for bringing us back to reality. All right, next is Item C, this is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving, approving with conditions, or denying special exception, SEZ 20250116, to allow like-for-like replacement of a tiki hut in EC zoning district seaward of the 1978 CCCL, for the property located at 6612 Estero Boulevard, providing for scribbled areas, severability, and an effective date. If any Town Council members had any ex parte communication to disclose, please let us know the subject discussed and the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, any correspondence that you received, or observations made of the site. Counsel Safford?
I do not, I am familiar with the property.
Counsel Woodson?
I know the property, but no conversation.
Vice Mayor Erholt?
I don't believe I've had a conversation on this one, no.
Counsel King?
Again, familiar with the property, but I do not remember any conversations.
Yeah, I'm also familiar with the property, but have not had any communication with, with the applicant. Jason Smalley has been qualified as an expert already by this Town Council, based on his education and experience, has been accepted as an expert in the field of land use planning and development in the town of Fort Myers Beach. Are there any other individuals who would like to be qualified as an expert witness on behalf of the applicant at this time? Dave, you're not an expert, okay, and has the property owner, applicant seen a copy of the agenda backup materials from staff? Yes, okay, go ahead, Jason.
Good morning, again, Jason Smalley, Senior Planner with your Planning and Zoning Department. As was mentioned before, before you today is the request to rebuild an approximately three hundred and twenty square foot tiki hut, which is located just seaward of the 1978 CCCL line on 6614 Estero Boulevard, the building address is 6612, this will deal with the common element, otherwise known as 6614. Before, before you is a request to rebuild that structure, we can validate that going back through Lee Property Appraisers aerials, and through the narrative provided to us by the applicant, that the structure was built in at about 2012, we can confirm that between the 2011 and 2012 aerials. Following the storm, the structure was completely obliterated and has been removed, the applicant is coming back for you today to replace that approximately three hundred and twenty square feet. The placement of the tiki is just seaward of the CCC, the 1978 CCCL, which is one of the requirements for approval of the special exception before you today, it's places close to the CCCL and out of inhibiting any of the plantings or any of the dune area, so they are attempting to accomplish that, in staff's opinion, with the replacement in the, in the proposed location. The applicant has not made any, any effort, as far as we know at this point, to add any electricals, or mechanicals, or plumbing to it, if they did, they would need to come in and get separate permitting for that, that is a very specific skill, but I'll leave that to the applicant as to whether or not they intend to do that. When they were at LPA, they seemed to indicate that they would not be using that, that it would just be a shade and rain protection area. Staff, through the, the review of the case, recommends approval, it's de minimis, it's putting back pretty much what was there before in a location that the code calls for. If, if the Town Council has any questions for staff, we're here to answer those, otherwise, Mr. Nussbaum and his, his team is here to answer any questions you may have with them.
Counsel King, any questions for Jason?
I do, Jason, I see that you have in here for Condition of Approval, construction should not occur during sea turtle season.
That is correct.
You're wanting that still in there, correct?
I will defer to the applicant as to whether or not they would like to remove that, again, staff doesn't necessarily have a problem with that, but that's gonna be done in conjunction with Chad, and we're gonna ensure that he is comfortable with the work that's being done in there, but if you, if you or the applicant would like to remove that from there, I, I'm not going to push back against that.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Erholt?
None.
Counsel Woodson?
None.
Counsel Safford?
I just look forward to hearing what Mr. Nussbaum has to say.
All right, thank you, Jason.
Of course.
Dave?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, councilors, town staff. My name is Dave Nussbaum, I am president of Island Winds Condominium Association located at 6610 Estero Boulevard. We consist of two thirteen-story buildings, we were completed construction in 1978, and we consider ourselves one of the oldest continuing operational condominiums on Fort Myers Beach, at least on the south end. We represent one hundred units on this island, which is equivalent to everybody on Albatros Street and a few other homes. In 2012, as Mr. Smalley indicated, we built a tiki hut on the beach, and our tiki hut has become part of the fabric of our condominium. We recently marked our three-year anniversary of the storm, and the three most prevalent questions that I got from the owners were, number one, are the elevators working yet, number two, when is the pool going to be opened, and number three, can we rebuild our tiki hut, and that's why I'm here today. Our tiki hut has been an altar for weddings, it's provided shade, and it's served as an area for picnics for owners throughout its existence. On Thursdays, we get together, we pass a dish, exchange ideas, we watch a sunset, and we sing God Bless America, and we have a contest to see who can blow the conch shells the longest. It happens every Thursday, weather permitting, it's part of our tradition. The tiki hut has survived storms, named hurricanes, even a meteorological tsunami that occurred about ten years ago, it could not withstand the force of heat. So, we're coming back, asking to rebuild this. This is part of our vibe, part of our culture, and that's all we want. Staff has recommended, please allow them, the LPA has unanimously done it, and we just, we want our home back.
Questions for Dave, Counsel King?
Yeah, Dave, how do you feel about the construction should not occur during sea turtle season?
We have our contractor ready to go November first, and in anticipation of a, of an okay from council, and he with, and I forgot to introduce my property manager, Tim Ryan, who is here, he has made all the arrangements, the contractor is ready to go first day after turtle season expires, we have the fireproofing per the fire marshal ready to go, and we will comply with all of the conditions that staff recommended as far as that.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Erholt, any questions for Dave?
Congratulations, no questions.
All right, Counsel Woodson?
I have none.
Counsel Safford?
I do not.
Thanks, Dave, for always being so prepared and so organized.
Well, it's, it's, this was the cherry on top of the cake that took us three years to get.
Very good, thank you, sir. All right. Public comment, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this matter? If so, please come forward to the podium and identify, identify yourself, provide your address, and whether you were sworn in. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, no rebuttal statements, Dave? No, I'm assuming, okay. I will now close the public hearing and request a discussion or a motion from Town Council to approve, approve with conditions, or deny with reasons, or a continuance to a time certain. Discussion or a motion?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and move Resolution 25-278.
I'll second.
All right, got a motion by Counsel King, seconded by Counsel Woodson, any further discussion?
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
So there was some comments possibly, I mean, they're very positive, very optimistic that things are gonna go correct as far as the timeline. You do have the option in your discretion to allow Chad to waive that under cer, certain circumstances, if you wanted to add that, if, that way, if they run into some kind of delay, or something unexpected comes up, they wouldn't have to come back through the process to get that waived.
Okay, thank you for that, I will go ahead and amend my motion then, to, to waive that, as we did for the county as well.
To authorize staff to waive it.
Thank you.
Oh, there is Chad, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, he doesn't know what he's walking into. Basically, just catch up, Chad is, just making, there was a motion just made to allow Islands, Island Winds to move forward with their project, should they run into any unforeseen circumstances, delays to allow you, to discretion, to allow them to work outside of turtle season, based on same thing we kind of discussed with the county and the pier and Bowditch.
Yeah, no worries, as long as we're working with FWC and get their okay, which I don't see any issues, we, we'll be fine.
Okay, thanks, Chad. Got a motion by, amended motion by Counsel King, Counsel Woodson? Councilor Woodson?
Amended second.
All right. Any further discussion? Councilor King?
Aye.
Councilor Woodson?
Aye.
Councilor Safran?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erle?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Thanks, guys. Next is item D. This quasi judicial item is a second reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance 25-15. This is an ordinance of the town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving, approving with conditions, denying an application to rezone property located at 138/140 Delmar Avenue, generally identified as strap number 19-46-24-W3-0100B.0150. Fort Myers Beach, from residential conservation to residential plan development, to allow construction of a two-story duplex above flood elevation and deviation from section 34-638D2 of the Land Development Code to allow a porch and stoop to encroach 15 feet into the 25-foot street setback where a maximum encroachment of 10 feet is permitted for accessory uses, providing for clarification as necessary, providing for conflicts of law, scrivener's errors, and severability. If any town council member is having the ex parte communication to disclose, please let us know the subject discussed and the identity of the person, group of entities with whom the communication took place, any correspondence that you received, or observations made of the site. Councilor King?
None.
Vice Mayor Erle?
None.
Councilor Woodson?
None.
Councilor Safran?
None.
And I have not any as well. Jason Green has been qualified as an expert already by this town council, and based on his education and experience, has been accepted as an expert in the field of land use planning and development in the town of Fort Myers Beach. Are there any other individuals who would like to be qualified as an expert witness on behalf of the applicant at this time? All right, seeing none. Is the property owner here? Okay. Have you seen a, have you seen a, have you seen a copy of the backup agenda material from staff?
Backup?
Have you seen the agenda, have you seen the agenda material?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. Jason Green, Community Development. 138-140 Delmar Avenue is rezoning to RPD, residential plan development. This is the process required due to the applicant's wishes to rebuild in the post-disaster. Requirements of our code and comp plan require the RPD process if they want to increase square footage of the unit. The staff report is outline the findings and conclusions as required by LDC, section 34-85 and 34-216. There are recommendation of three conditions of approval, and staff's findings and recommendations include that defines it consistent with those sections I previously mentioned, and consistent with those, or those conditions make it consistent, excuse me, consistent. And yes, this is the second reading, right?
Yes.
Second reading for approval. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilor King, any questions for Jason?
I do not.
Vice Mayor Erle?
None.
Councilor Safran?
For the record, there's been no changes since the first reading, is that correct? Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Woodson?
I have none.
I do not have any either. Thanks, Jason. All right. Advocate, would you like to come up and say anything? Come up to the.
Well, kind of just a.
Hold on a second till you get to the microphone. Got to identify, come to the microphone and identify yourself.
Yeah, hi, thank you. Yeah, my name is Scott Fear. I'm the, I am the owner of that property. And it's just a side note of what I wanted to bring up after the approval process regarding the permit pricing. Should I do that now, or?
The applicant wants to ask for a waiver to the fees for the application.
It appears it's a commercial permitting when we first applied for it, and we'd just like to get it down to the standard residential permit fees.
Nancy?
So this is the second, this is the second reading in the middle of a quasi judicial hearing. You can make the request, and it can come through staff to the town manager, and then based on what the town manager decides, it would then come back. So they really, they're not in a position right now to give you an answer on that.
Okay.
But you can apply for it.
Gotcha. I wasn't sure if this was the place or not.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, thank you, though, for consideration.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Just hold on a second. Jason or John, you got any questions for the applicant?
I do not.
Vice Mayor?
None.
Councilor Woodson?
None.
Councilor Safran?
I do not.
All right. Thank you, sir. You can sit down, unless you want to stand there. It's up to you.
I don't mind. I'm going to.
All right. We'll now open up for public comment. Is there any members of the public who wish to comment on this matter? If so, please come forward to the podium and identify yourself, provide your address, and whether you were sworn in. Any public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment. Does the applicant have any other, anything else you'd like to say? No?
No.
Okay. I will now close the public hearing and request a discussion or a motion from town council to approve, approve with conditions, deny with reasons, or a continuance to a time certain. Discussion or motion?
Mayor, I hate to interrupt, however, when you read the title, I did not hear the last part of it, and because this is second reading and because we have advertised it, if I may, with your permission, ask the clerk to simply read the title one more time in its entirety, based on the advertising that was done.
Yeah, but I thought I read the entire thing, but if you feel I missed something, please do.
Yeah, I think he stopped after severability, but I don't know.
Feel free to reread it.
Okay. Ordinance 2515, an ordinance of the town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving, approving with conditions, denying an application to rezone property located at 138-140 Delmar Avenue, generally identified as strap number 19-46-24-W3-0100B.0150. Fort Myers Beach, from residential conservation to residential plan development, to allow construction of a two-story duplex above flood elevation and a deviation from section 34-638D2 of the Land Development Code to allow a porch and stoop to encroach 15 feet into the 25-foot street setback where a maximum encroachment of 10 feet is permitted for accessory uses, providing for clarification as necessary, providing for conflicts of law, scrivener's errors, severability, and providing for an effective date.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and move ordinance 25-15.
I will second it as conditioned by staff. Any further discussion? Councilor King?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Vice Mayor Erle?
Aye.
Councilor Woodson?
Aye.
And Councilor Safran?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Next is item E. This is a quasi judicial item. It is a first reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance 25-17. If approved at first reading, a second reading and final adoption hearing will be scheduled for November 3rd, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. or at another time identified by town council. This is an ordinance of the town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving or denying a home rule development agreement for property located at 110 to 130 Connecticut Street, parcel 1 and 134/138 Connecticut Street, parcel 2, Fort Myers Beach, Florida. Strap numbers 29-46-24-W1-00151.0010 and 29-46-24-W1-00151.001A, and owned by First Baptist Church of Fort Myers, Inc., as authorized by section 2-100 of the Town's Land Development Code and in compliance with the procedure for the application and approval of development agreements with deviations set forth in resolution number 24-73 and amended by resolution 24-247 for the purpose of redevelopment of the parcels 1 and 2 to allow rebuilding a church facility and 12 single-family homes, providing for terms and conditions, including but not limited to the identification of the proposed use of the property, a finding of consistency with the town of Fort Myers Beach Comprehensive Plan, commitments and development obligations, deviations needed for development, providing for other clarifications as necessary, providing for conflicts of law, scrivener's errors, severability, and providing for an effective date. If any town council member is having the ex parte communication to disclose, please let us know the subject discussed and the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, any correspondence that you received, or observations made of the site. Councilor Safran?
I do not.
Councilor Woodson?
I do not.
Vice Mayor Erle?
I have had conversations on and off with the applicants since this project first originated. It's hard to draw lines of demarcation as this project has evolved, so I would just disclose that I've certainly been to the site many, many times, and I've also particularly post-hurricaneian when they did so much work for the community. And I also spent some time at the church and meeting with the various folks, again, not so much recently, but just over the last three years.
Councilor King?
Again, I guess I'll piggyback on what the vice mayor said. I haven't had anything about this current proposal.
Yeah, I haven't had any recent conversations, but have been to the site many times and had conversations about this site as it has evolved through its iterations to get to this point. Jason Green has been qualified as an expert already by this town council, and based on his education and experience, has been accepted as an expert in the field of land use planning and development in the town of Fort Myers Beach. Are there any other individuals who would like to be qualified as an expert witness on behalf of the applicant at this time?
Yes, sir. Neil Montgomery for the record. I'm the attorney. I'm an expert in land use planning. I have been a land use attorney since before the city or the town incorporated. I first encountered Jason in DeSoto County, which is a while ago. And with me is Jennifer Sapon, who's an expert in planning, and Jonathan Thomas, who's an expert in development. And Jonathan missed being sworn in, so he needs to be sworn in.
All right. Please stand up, sir. Clerk will swear you in.
If you raise your right hand, sorry, if you raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mayor, may I ask if each of the experts would just come to the mic and again state your name in your area of expertise?
I'm Jonathan Thomas, and I'm with SJ Collins, and my area of expertise is real estate development.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Sapon. I'm an expert in land planning and general site planning. I have not been accepted here before, but I have been accepted in Lee, Charlotte, Collier Counties, Henry, DeSoto, and several of the cities within.
Okay. And just state your name again, forest man, if you would. Yeah.
Neil Montgomery.
All right. Is there a motion to accept Jonathan, Jennifer, and Neil as expert witness on behalf of the applicant at this time? So moved. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Erle.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Woodson. Any further discussion? Council, Vice Mayor Erle?
Aye.
Councilor Woodson?
Aye.
Councilor Safran?
Aye.
Councilor King?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a parliamentary inquiry. Madam Town Attorney, just for, just the public who is watching this, is the applicant a bifurcated situation? In other words, do we have the developer of the property up front and the church separate? Are they together? Is it all one project? Do you want to just sort of, just sort of set the table, if you will, for folks who might be watching?
Thank you for that, for that question. So based on our review, the current property owner is the First Baptist Church of Fort Myers Beach, Inc. However, the developer is coming forward as an agent for them, and I would defer to Ms. Montgomery to further perhaps explain the relationship of the parties. Your agreement also makes reference to an additional entity as well. Can you?
Can you come up?
Oh, did you want us to do that right now?
Yes. If you can. So in the agreement, there is reference made to Fort Myers Beach BBC Residential LLC, and then there is subsequent reference to SJ Collins Enterprises LLC. And in the document itself, there is attachment or exhibit C that draws upon an excerpt from a development agreement with SJ Collins. So if you could just clarify for the council as well as the public, the relationship between these entities and the property owner?
Yeah, so SJ Collins is our basic global operating entity where we operate all our businesses. Fort Myers BBC is the project-specific entity for this specific project that is wholly owned by SJ Collins. And then as far as our affiliation with the church, we have a relationship with them, and we're working with them to redevelopment their parcel.
So there is a reference to a, that there is a pending contract, a sales contract?
Correct.
We don't have any idea, based on the record, as to when that closing is going to occur. I think they just want to know if they were to move forward and approve this, who are they going to be working with, and, you know, how is this project coming together? That was really crystal clear.
So our contract has us closing by the end of the year. That presumes we're zoned. We have to be zoned before we can close. And then ultimately, we would close, build the church, develop the lots, and SJ Collins/ Fort Myers BBC, which is the same, is responsible for completing the project.
So I think Nancy's point, we would be dealing with you, not necessarily the church?
Correct.
Did that get you the answers that you needed, Nancy?
Yes, hopefully it clarifies for council as well as the public.
All right. Thank you.
And I just want to add one thing. During the LPA discussion, there was a change to the development agreement because they did want SJ Collins to be responsible for the unified water management system for both parcel 1 and 2.
Thank you for that clarification. Jason?
Sure. I'll give it a shot. My first deal here. Yeah, the property in question under this developer agreement, there's two parcels in your draft developer agreement that's in your packet. It refers to parcel 1. Parcel 1, which is 2.05 acres, that's the front portion, that will be the 12 residential single-family lots. And then there's the rear 1 acre, which is referred to as parcel 2 in the draft agreement, which obviously will be the remaining church property for that. In your draft agreement, there's also exhibits D, which goes over the findings and conclusions from staff, reflects a lot of what was in the previous staff report. And then E has the, let me get to it. And then exhibit E has, lists out the specific deviations requested for parcel 1. The change, there was a change at the LPA moving forward to here, which included, previously there was a rezoning application for a portion of the property, which was parcel 1, the front, and then, which was RPD. And then through that discussion with the LPA, it was recommended to move forward with just the developer's agreement, which would cover the entire property and be able to master control essentially of this agreement over the entire property, both parcels, in the So based on the recommendation, the findings under exhibit D in the agreement, it identifies comprehensive plan policies and Land Development Code items, finds that the request would be consistent with those, subject to conditions in the agreement being completed. So we can go into the details of site plans or any of the conditions or items if you would like, but otherwise, that's recommendation, and I'll lean on Nancy to help me with this process.
So generally, because, you know, Jason is replacing Sarah, generally what we ask for staff to do is just to kind of give an introduction, an overview, and then the burden is, of course, on the applicant to request the rezoning change, and then staff will provide comment if there's any issues that they disagree with the applicant on. So we should probably move to the applicant at this point.
Can we ask questions?
Sure.
Jason first?
Sure.
Okay. Councilor Safran, any questions for Jason?
I'm going to hold off until I speak with the applicant.
Okay. Councilor Woodson?
I'll wait as well. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Not at this time.
Councilor King?
Nothing current.
I just got a question based on what we had for public comment. He had talked about seven foot, but in what's in here, it looks like it's a five-foot setback for each property. And staff is okay with a five-foot setback between those 12 single-family residential homes?
It's internal, so it only affects themselves, essentially. It is pretty small, but there's a lot of communities that are actually going to that. But it's, you're talking about the side setback into?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, it affects their own properties, right? So it's not, there's not an external lot that it's affecting for somebody outside because it's a self-contained subdivision, essentially. So we haven't had many of those.
The only concern I have is, I remember a previous hearing that we've had before where the fire department had had issues with anything under a five-and-a-half-foot setback for being able to access between it should there be a case of a fire. Have we had conversations with them? Are they okay with this?
Honestly, I don't know that that's been checked. Plus, you have an overhang issue, to your point, I think, to consider where the code allows up to a three-foot encroachment of that setback for the roof overhang. You could clarify, and maybe the applicant can answer the design side of it, but maybe that five is all-inclusive of that?
The overhang?
And that would be, well, be seven feet, as if, you know, something like that, but...
So we're not sure if it'd be overhang to overhang is five feet, which would be...
Right. In theory, if you applied that allowance to a new setback, then it would essentially be up to four feet separation between the eaves potentially. Or you could just not allow that to apply, that exception that's normally in the code? Because again, that exception assumes there's a bigger setback, right? And equipment is not included in our setbacks. We make sure that they have to meet the setbacks, I should say, here.
Okay.
It definitely becomes an issue in other places that exempt the equipment, but here at least that 10 feet would include equipment.
Okay. I'll get some clarification from the applicant.
Yes, from the design side, yes.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Come on.
Good morning. Neil Montgomery again for the record. Before I turn it over to the experts, I do want to give a little bit of history about how we got here. As you know, there was a church on this site. It was damaged and removed. There were some questions or concerns about how the church had been functioning and whether it was compatible with the community. And out of those discussions and work with the staff, that's how we derived or arrived at moving forward with the development agreement. Therefore, there would be more controls over what was happening on that site to ensure that it functioned as a place of worship as that defined and envisioned in your Land Development Code. During the presentation to the LPA, they came up with some additional suggestions, which you'll see in the development agreement. They wanted to eliminate from the residential zoning district bed and breakfast, community residential home, home care. And one issue that was very important to them was the daily rental of dwelling units. So those uses are prohibited in the development agreement in an effort to be consistent with the community and address the concerns. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jonathan Thomas.
I just want to do a quick introduction to SJ Collins. I've met with some of you over the years, but we're a real estate developer out of Atlanta. We do a lot of mixed-use retail residential. We just finished a 300-unit apartment complex in Panama City Beach. We've done a lot of work in Florida. If you're familiar with the Whole Foods on Daniel's Marketplace, that's one of our developments. So, you know, really, we're just working with the church, trying to get the church back open and operating, and ultimately develop this small 12-lot subdivision, and look forward to being a part of the town coming back from the hurricane. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Jennifer.
Just a quick question I have for you. What is, or maybe staff can answer it. You made mention, or you made mention of the no overnight rentals of the property. What is the?
Daily.
What's that?
Daily rentals.
What is, what is the normal, maybe Scott might even know, what's the, what is that zone? What is that area when it comes to short-term rentals? Is it weekly? Is it monthly? Is it?
That was going to be my question. Currently, on Connecticut Street, it is a weekly street.
Okay.
So I think it would be best that instead of saying no nightly rentals, I think, based on our ordinance, it should fall in line with the current ordinance. We shouldn't.
Correct.
You can't make, in order to protect our grandfather ability, you can't make an ordinance more restrictive. So I think it'd be best for everyone involved to leave it as following our ordinance, which is weekly.
So, well, yes and no. So the issue there is, in the towns' codes, there's a provision that allows properties adjacent to on Astero to be daily. So even if you're in a weekly or a month, yeah, there's an exemption. So it's all properties anywhere, it doesn't matter what it is, it allows them to be weekly and that's, I'm sorry, daily.
No, that's in the commercial zone.
It doesn't give a reference to the commercial zone. It's a weird thing in the code. Your daily and your, excuse me, your weekly and your monthly are uses that are in your schedule of uses per zoning, but then in the short-term rental section, there's an exemption for properties that are adjacent to Astero. It's a weird, wrong place to be in, and it's confusing, but it's in there to exempt. So that's where the discussion came up, as far as, because would that allow, when they plat the subdivision, build it, properties adjacent backing up to Astero, they would have, potentially have daily? And so I was trying to address that issue to ensure that it doesn't.
Can you check on that, please?
Yes. And also, as far as SB 180 and the prohibition against more restrictive, more burdensome, it is the applicant that is agreeing to voluntarily put that restriction on them. So we're not going to have any SB 180 issues, but I will clarify as to what your code says because that's where it seems that there's some concern.
Okay, so if an applicant actually...
If an applicant wants to be more restrictive...
That's not on us making it more restrictive.
Correct.
So we're okay with SB 180?
We're okay with that part of it.
Right. So then it would default to what you're referring to is the RC and the typical weekly use that would be required.
Okay. Fair enough. Councillor King, questions for the applicant?
Nothing currently.
We have another witness.
Huh?
We have another witness.
Oh, well, I was just thinking if they have any questions for him. We were going to let you continue. You just asked, we had any questions for him? Nothing for him, Councillor King?
Nothing currently.
Vice Mayor?
I'll wait till they're finished.
Okay. Councillor Woodson?
I'll wait. Thank you.
Councillor Safrer?
Yeah, I've got a bunch of questions, but let's have everybody come up.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you.
Again, for the record, my name is Jennifer Sapon. I'm an AICP land planner and I have been sworn in. So I wanted to start first with looking at the aerial as it currently exists and the surrounding properties. The subject property is shown here in red, and it is surrounded by existing single-family uses, the RC and RS zoning districts above the property. I also wanted to point out in the northeast, there's two single-family lots that are above the back end of the property. The one on the southern end is what we call a flag lot. So the driveway for that property runs along the church with a second residential lot on the other side. This slide shows the zonings. On the left is the existing zoning map. On the right is the proposed. The pink star shows the subject property. The IN zoning district would remain on the northern end, and the RC zoning district would be applied to the 2.1 acres along Astero Boulevard. So what you can see in this map clearly, then, the RC is just filling in the gap there where RC continues on either side. The future land use of the property is medium residential. There's three residential types allowed in this future land use: smaller residential single-family lots, high-rise buildings, or RV sites. The proposed developer agreement with this amendment would eliminate the high-rise and RV uses. In your packet, it was submitted at the LPA hearing, there were 15 letters of support or no objection, and it's, it my belief that the elimination of the high-rise buildings and the RV parks was in large part why the support of the community, why we got those letters. Prior to Hurricane Ian, the church site encompassed the entire property, church uses. The main church was along Astero Boulevard, but in the back, there were four structures for various purposes, and that's where they had the majority of their parking. I wanted to point out on the bottom right of this slide, this is a 2019 Google Earth photo. As you can see, this is standing on Connecticut Street. Those two single-family lots, the flag lots that are on the left, as you can see, the parking lot is, very little buffers there, and that's where they have some of their storage of their church vans, their parking, and you can see the dumpsters are there. Looking at the proposed site plan, for simplicity purposes, I'm going to call the top of the slide north, even though you can see the north angle, north arrow here, it's at an angle. So the western portion of the project, 2.1 acres, proposing 12 units on there, rezoning from IN to RC. Those 12 dwelling units are consistent with the allowable density for the mixed residential future land use, so consistent with that policy. On the east, the church would be a redevelopment of 1.1 acres and no changes to the zoning category there. When you look at access, all of the access is on Connecticut Street with no driveways or access directly going on to Astero Boulevard. There's separate accesses for the church and the residential, two accesses for the single-family residential, those will be alleys, and they will be privately maintained. Since planning board, these alleys have been adjusted a little bit. The one on the west, there's a hammerhead down in the bottom. You see, it's kind of a L-shaped turnaround, and that will allow vehicles and emergency vehicles to turn around at the bottom there. And those have been added through discussions with the fire department. The eastern alley has been reduced, is now reduced to 179-foot maximum length, and pointing out that only three residential uses above this and access this alley. The church access on the western parcel, or sorry, yes, eastern parcel, the driveway has been pushed as far as possible to the west. The purpose of this is to get it away from those two existing single-family driveways as much as possible. Water management for the site, this will have a modern water management system. This church was built many years ago, so there will be upgrades to that. The detention area, which you'll see, the detention area is where a lot of the green is on this slide, in the southern, and then along the eastern, kind of going around the church and around the church parking lot. This will provide the water quality that will be needed for water management, but it also creates a greater separation between the existing single-family lots platted to the south and to the east. The water management system will be privately maintained, and it is part of the open space. The project does meet the required open space, and 55% of this site is open space. There's two amenity areas, common parcel areas. The first one, it's a smaller one on Connecticut near the western alley, and then the larger one is at the end of the shorter dead-end alley there, kind of near the church. The church parcel will allow, it's part of the developer agreement, will allow government entities to use the parking lot during emergencies, and the church will be required to have onsite traffic maintenance. The church does have a development order under review, and, you know, as Jonathan said, the residential will be lagging after that. So the residential exact design hasn't been formulated yet, but you can see here, this is the development order plan for the church parcel. This is the landscape plan. There's buffers required on the north, south, and east side, and a wall will be required on the southern side and the east side where those residential uses above that property. And as required by code, the landscaping will be on the outside of the wall. What that will do is that will block the lights from the parking cars to the residents. And I want to point out, the landscape plan buffers internally. This site on one acres will have 56 trees, 259 shrubs, and 483 linear feet of wall. So when you recall what the site looked like before, with the landscaping before, this new layout will be a large improvement, and the main church will be moved to these, to that back area. Yes, sir?
Just a question, just to make sure I understood you correctly. Did you see that church would be coming with a development order later?
The church is already under review. The residential will follow the church. So this plan that you see here is under staff review right now.
So they're under review, but they're all encompassed in this particular development agreement before us?
Correct. Correct. It'll be a phased, phased development.
Got you.
Which, that's very common, and especially when you have a purchaser, they don't usually go into hard design with engineering and go forward with all that investment until they are assured that they're going to get at least a zoning level entitlement.
Go back with the wall. What's the wall going to be constructed of?
I do not know. Do you know what the wall is constructed of?
And is that going to give any heartburn to our floodplain manager?
Our engineer's not here, so I can't speak to the flood or the flood manager issue, but that is per code. I mean, some type of barrier is required. It is not 100% specified what material it will be yet, but it'll be per code.
Would you have any objection to adding some wording that is compliant with floodplain regulations as well in there?
It has to be.
Well...
Yeah. I mean, they're pretty standard typical to be. It's an A-zone, so it's not...
Well, as someone that has had to go through the fencing issue?
Yes, sir.
I can tell you it's not as clear. It's as clear as mud. Some can work, some don't. Code will say it's okay for something, but floodplain doesn't think it's worth... So I would just like more clarification as to what that wall's going to be, because I'm sure the neighbors are going to want to know.
I don't have an objection to that.
Did you have any more questions on this slide? Okay. Want to move ahead. Switching over to the single-family side, this slide only outlines the vegetation around the perimeter, the buffers. Of course, there will be all the additional plantings that will be built vertically when the homes go up. But looking at the buffers, there's a 15-foot wide buffer on the north and west, and then the south, again, there'll be a wall. And the purpose again of that wall, when people drive down the dead-end road, the lights of the, from that alley won't shine then on the residential lots. So looking around the perimeter of the single-family, there'll be 37 trees, 1,152 shrubs, and 342 linear feet of wall. I just, I wanted to point out, I didn't specify before, the plantings for the church, they are all native plantings, and driving up and down the streets now, you can see the benefit of native plants. They're the ones who survive and non-natives don't always. This has been outlined already, but there are a handful of uses that are prohibited by the developer agreement that either would be allowed by right with the existing IN zoning or the proposed RC zoning or the particular overlay along Astero. The bed and breakfast, community residential home, home care, and daily rentals, all excluded from the residential and from the church site, no temporary or permanent living quarters or dwelling units, no overnight parking of a recreational vehicle, and no social services or rehabilitation programs will be conducted onsite. So it will be just the church facility there. Next, I want to switch to the development regulations. I'll break down this table in further slides, just to kind of explain, on the left is IN, so that's the development regulations that exist on the current property as is today. The next column is what is proposed for the church. The next column is what is allowed by the Land Development Code in the proposed RC zoning district. And then on the right, what is proposed in our developer agreement with the single-family. So looking at the church site, in red, the box around red, those are the development regulations that are allowed right now. If the church were not selling to SJ Collins and were rebuilding, these are the setbacks that they could use. And on the pink on the right, you can see this is what is shown on the site plan, the site plan, and that is included in your developer agreement. So you can see in every instance shown pink or purple, the proposed developer agreement is going to increase those setbacks far beyond what the church could build if they rebuilt today. And additionally, not just the church, any other IN use that is allowed could rebuild under these development regulations. So the single-family abutting properties are greatly benefited by this increased separation. And again, the separation comes from the detention area that goes around the site, so it's an open space and landscaped area that is increasing these setbacks. Looking at the single-family regulations on the left, those are the regulations that are allowed by the Land Development Code in the RC district, and on the right are the proposed development regulations. And the gentleman is no longer here, had the mint-green shirt, but he had a question about the reduced setbacks, and he believed his was larger. And the setbacks do tie to the size of the lot. Table 34-3, Note 9, a six-and-a-half-foot setback is required for a 50-foot lot or less. And with our smaller lots, which again, the future land use category specifies smaller lots, so our lot size would only have a six-and-a-half-foot side setback. But larger lots, let's see, 75-foot wide lot, that setback would increase to 10 feet. So it depends on how big your lot is, how big your side setback is. So our requested deviations are shown on this slide, most of them. The first deviation applies to Connecticut Street, and it is to reduce the setback, the street setback, from 25 feet to 15 feet. So this applies to two lots, lot number one and lot number 10, you can see on the slide. It's the side of the home. So while it's a street setback, it is a side, so you don't have any kind of concern about cars, parking, or driveway access. Side of the home, it will be landscaped. The entirety of that setback, that 15-foot setback, is the landscape buffer. So the entire 15-foot setback will be buffered. So the entire 15-foot setback will be buffered. Deviation 2 is for the alley setbacks. It reduces those from 25 feet to 10 feet, and the reduced setback applies to the undulations in the home, like say a bay window or something like that. The garage door is required to sit back 20 feet, so that'll, that'll give you plenty of room to park your car. So the reduced 10-foot setback is for non-garage structure. And again, this is internal to the site. It is on privately maintained roadways, having no effect to off-site properties. Deviations 3 and 4 are to reduce rear and side setbacks. Again, these are internal to the site. The rear is from 20 to 10, and the side is from 6.5 to 5, and again, that 6.5 is because the lot sizes are smaller. The final deviation is for intersection separation. The two pink arrows here show the intersections that were reducing the separation. It is required to be 125 feet, as proposed is 20 feet, 25 feet, and this is done to move the church driveway as far as possible away from the existing residential. So in conclusion, the development agreement has been prepared in accordance with state and local laws, and as outlined in the staff report, the request is consistent with a comprehensive plan through the implementation of this developer agreement, and we are requesting a motion for approval. And I believe you have questions for me.
If I could, I want to ask Jennifer a couple of questions. Jennifer, you work for an engineering firm?
You've got to get up to the mic so we can hear both of you.
I want to ask Jennifer a couple of questions. Jennifer worked for an engineering firm for I don't know how many years, so I know she'll know the answer to this question, and that is, when you go through the development order process, does the fire marshal have to sign off on your plans to ensure it meets the fire code?
So yes, I have worked 30 years, I guess, with engineering companies and engineers. That's how I started, and then transferred over to planning. A five-foot side setback is very common. In Lee, Collier, Charlotte, everywhere I work, I would say 85% of my single-family subdivisions have five-foot side setbacks. And yes, during the development order process, the fire marshal is always very involved, and also drainage usually comes up as a question with a five-foot side setback. See, what is unique about a planned subdivision is you can plan each lot together, cohesively. Side setbacks, the larger side setbacks apply when you build your house, and then 10 years later, someone else comes and builds his house. Drainage becomes a problem, making, ensuring that the fire department can review those independently. As a planned development, you can look at it cohesively. Also, as a planned development, you usually encourage clustering, where you, internal to your site, put your buildings closer together, so that you're able to bring a public benefit elsewhere, usually through common open space. And in this case, we've got a water management system, cleaning the water better than what it did before, and providing greater separation to the abutting single-family lots.
But after the devil's advocate, because it's a planned development, wouldn't you be required to maintain the water anyway? So how could you consider that a public benefit?
The...
If you're required to do it anyway?
You are correct. It is, but it is still a benefit. Just because you are required to do it doesn't mean that it is not a benefit. Now, the location of it, I think, is important, the location of the detention. It is more cost-effective to put a thin little swale all the way around it. In this case, the developer has chosen to locate it specifically around the parking lot, specifically where noise or lights might be a problem to the residents.
John, questions for, is that the end of the presentation?
Yes, it is.
Or do you have anything else you want to add? You said you had questions for her, you only asked one, I want to...
No, so the only thing else I want to add is, as you know, because the site was developed eons ago, it doesn't meet any of the current water management regulations for water quality, and really for retention and detention. So it is a benefit that the entire site will be brought up to current standards, which as of October 1st got even more restrictive in terms of water quality, so, and to have it managed by one manager to ensure it gets taken care of. I don't know if it's a big problem on the beach, but in many locations, water management systems aren't maintained, and it impacts surrounding property owners, so that won't occur in this case.
John, any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I guess, I'm not sure if this is the right place to do it or not, but my understanding, there's a code violation currently in effect, and I just hope that folks would be coming into compliance.
I can speak to that.
Thank you. So I've had many conversations with the church, and that's a frustration on our end as well, but they have a hearing with the magistrate tomorrow, and they've assured me that they are going to agree to remove the trailers. They're working through that process. They have, so, the current leadership of Beach Baptist Church ultimately is going to be assumed by another church in the community. That's what we anticipate. So they're working through with that church where they're going to move them, but they will be moved off the island, and that will be resolved.
I would, I would ask it, Mr. King and Mr. Mayor, if you would. Tom Yazo can come up and speak, I don't believe that they are on for tomorrow's magistrate. Do you want to clarify that, Tom, or maybe them?
Yes, and I, and I think that, and Tom, you can speak to it as well, that in the event of non-compliance, there would be a lien, a certified lien, which, you know, the magistrate set a compliance date, so there would be some monies that would be owed.
I understand that. That's, that's not really my area, that's more of a church issue, but I am trying to facilitate getting it resolved. And right now, all I can say is that I haven't spoken with the church at length, and they have agreed with us to remove the trailers. Now, unfortunately, that's not going to be accomplished by tomorrow, but that's for the church to work out with the magistrate, and whatever comes of that's between the church and the magistrate.
Just, just to be clear, Thomas Yazo, emergency services director for Myers Beach. There's no, this case is not on for tomorrow. It's coming back on the 29th. So they've already had part of their magistrate hearing done. The 29th is the compliance timeframe. They have a compliance date of the 19th, I believe, and they have to be in compliance by the 19th. So it does give you more time, that makes it easier for you, but there's nothing on for tomorrow. I don't know where that came from. I know the church has a misconception, because they sent an email, but the order came out, and they're back on the 29th to see their status.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm not sure what transpired, but I was on the last magistrate call, and my understanding was we were supposed to be on tomorrow, but maybe something changed. But in the meantime, we'll work it out.
Okay, very good. I, I don't, I don't know what you're referencing, but we can figure that out by all means, but they would have to have been, have due notice done for their, you know, for that to happen tomorrow, and it's actually a different judge.
Gotcha. So the 29th, or 19th? So we're done the 19th, and the hearing's on the 29th?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so after the 19th, I think the town would probably be looking for fines due to the non-compliance, because the existing structures are non-compliant with our flood regulations, and so we have to respond back to FEMA on that.
Understood. Thank you, that's all I have.
Vice Mayor?
Forgive me, tell me your first name again?
Jonathan.
Jon, do you say Jonathan?
Yes, sir.
Jonathan, thank you for being here this morning. Jonathan, could you take this up 10,000 feet a little bit? You've got some history, obviously, with this property. It's my recollection that you all came here to Fort Myers Beach to assist and to help facilitate some kind of a business arrangement, business model, that would allow for the church to be rebuilt. Is that a fair, do you want to just, just give us a little bit of history on that?
Sure. So one of our other partners in this venture is actually a childhood friend of Sean and his brother. Sean's the pastor of First Baptist. They reached us, out to us shortly after the hurricane, looking for any assistance they could get to try to get the church redeveloped, because they didn't have insurance, they didn't really have a path to get the church redeveloped. So we came down and met with them, and decided to try to partner and, and figure out a way to get them back open and operational, and, you know, this is going back quite a bit to some of the stuff that was referred to tangentially earlier, but we started out with the idea of doing a condo tower. We had a lot of conversations with folks around the town, and, you know, it was understood that it would be difficult, but it might be possible. But we had a town meeting, and a lot of the neighbors came, and we just decided after that meeting that while it may be possible, it was going to be extremely difficult and probably not beneficial. So based on that, we went back and looked at the zoning we already had, and what was in the comp plan that we were theoretically allowed to do, and that's when we decided, look, we are basically by right able to do 12 single-family homes. Let's do that, because that's the path of least resistance to get the church back open and operational as quickly as possible. So that's kind of the backstory of how we got where we are, and it's, it's been a long process, and we're very anxious, as I'm sure you all are, to see this move forward, because nobody wants to see it just sit vacant.
Yeah, I think, I just think it's important for people to know, there's been a lot of aspersions cast against people who want to put their capital at risk and invest in Fort Myers Beach. You all came here, basically, it was really a calling to come here to Fort Myers Beach and help save this church. Is that, is that a fair characterization?
I think that's true, yes.
Yeah. I think, too, just so people understand the business model, so when you build the homes, the sale of those homes will then facilitate the funds to rebuild the church. Is that, is that a fair simplification?
Ultimately, yes. I mean, obviously, the way we have this structured is we're trying to get the church back open and operational as soon as possible. So ultimately, the, the way the transaction works is, we're going to purchase the land. The purchase of the land will facilitate rebuilding the church, which we will also participate in to get it done, and then ultimately, selling the lots pays for the entire project overall. But initially, for the church, the takedown of the land is what allows the church to get back open and operational, and the lot sales come later to back, backstop everything.
And so it's codified, obviously, in the agreement, when you, when you purchase the land, that, that church will be built, is that?
Correct.
And that will be built first, before the homes? That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman?
I have a couple of questions. You just said something about this church, or the operation of this church is going to change, or...
Potentially, none of that is set in stone yet, but it is believed by the current operators of the church and just our group collectively, that there needs to be some new, you know, path going forward that, that takes that church into a new direction. They've had a few conversations with a few different churches in the area, and I really don't want to get into that too much, because it's still not defined, but I think ultimately, it is highly likely that a, another church that's established in the area will ultimately take over and, and brand that church and take it forward.
So does that change, if you will, the leadership of the church, or the...
Ultimately, yes. I don't, I don't think the leadership that's currently in place at the church will be there five years from now, but it will be, I think, a more sophisticated operation going forward.
Okay. And then, I'm looking at this one deviation, to reduce the intersection separation from 125 feet to 25 feet. That's, that's a big difference.
Jennifer question?
Jennifer question? Okay. Can you explain that one for me, please?
So that deviation separation of 125 feet, that's pretty standard in most codes, but that is for a local roadway. In this case, it's applied to a driveway for the church, and to this alley that serves three residential lots. So understanding that local roadways, some of the, there aren't a lot here, but in like Lee County, some of the larger local roadways that feed several homes, that intersection separation is 125 feet. So in this case, while the church will generate a lot of traffic on main day, it's not a, every morning, people coming out and coming in and going to work, and there's only three homes that it'll be accessing. So that reduced separation, looking at your deviation criteria, it's that each item enhances the achievement, or the objectives of the development. So decreasing that separation increases our objectives, one, by not intruding into the residential to the east, shifting that, that driveway access as far as possible, and protect the public health, safety, and welfare. From that, I would say that the traffic generated by the alley of three residential homes is, is far less than what is standard for local road intersection separations, and that is the benefit, or at least not the detriment, of public interest. And so for those reasons, I believe that the, those reduced intersection separation with the lower traffic does meet the intent of the criteria for your deviations.
So, so if this deviation was not approved, this part of the deviation, what would that, what difference would that make on the site plan? What, what does that reduce for the church, or...
To, what it would do is it would impact the abutting residential uses more. The church driveway access would then be shifted as far as east as possible to, to greater that intersection separation. And it's, in my opinion, as a planner, this is a better design, due to the low traffic, and increasing that separation to single-family, I believe, is very important.
Can I just say one thing? One other thing related to this issue, and, and I don't want to mix apples and oranges, but it is important, because it, can you go back to the slide with the site plan? So we may have still had some issue with entrance separation, but just to be clear, where the church is currently located, initially, we had the church planned south in the bottom corner, and through conversations with staff, and various conversations with the town, we actually jointly decided to relocate the church where it sits today. So a lot of the conflict that came between those two driveways is a direct result of us moving that church location, which was not necessarily our idea, but we were willing to do so to try to get through some of the staff comments and other issues related to the project. And the last thing I would say, to Jennifer's point, 125 feet between an actual road would absolutely be necessary, but with this just being essentially an alleyway, I don't see a lot of conflict there.
Well, if I, Jason, or staff, so you were saying the staff recommendation was to flip-flop basically the parking entrance and the building? I'm curious as to why. To me, I see an issue with people trying to go to church, driving down that alley, realizing they drove in the wrong entrance, and now backing out onto Connecticut Street, tried to go into the right entrance.
Let me just, I don't, it's more nuanced than that. It wasn't exactly move here, move there. It was more of looking at the site globally, and staff, and I don't think it was you, I think it was folks before you, they really, for whatever reason, I'm not even saying I agree with it, but they did not like the church crammed in the corner at the planned south bottom, because they felt like it made it even more encroaching into the residential neighborhood, and we had a lot of conversations about, well, ultimately, this whole thing's going to be a residential neighborhood. Frankly, it was confusing to me, but honestly, in order to get where we are today, this is a concession that we made with staff, putting the church in this location, and that directly resulted in impacts to that entrance.
I still don't understand the reasoning behind why, if, to me, if I just look on the surface, it could solve a lot of issues by just flopping the building with the, not asking to reinvent the wheel, I'm just trying to understand staff's point of view as to why you thought it was important to have those two entrances so close together, creating a deviation that may not need to be there if the design, the site plan was a little bit different.
One last point. It's not that they wanted the two entrances where they are, it's that when we moved the church to the location, which was a concession we made through the process, the, the entrance in the previous version, I believe, was more towards the property line, and there was greater separation there, but when we moved the church to the location it's in now, the entrance had to move, because there was nowhere else to put it.
And you're saying exactly what I'm saying.
Right.
Is, to me, it made more sense to have it flip-flop, maybe the origin, in my mind, just because now you're keeping the massing in the center of the property, further away from the residential, because when you look at the setbacks, yeah, you've got it listed as a 45-foot setback, but really, it's only 18. It's not 45, which is still greater than what you'd be required to do by code, but now you have a much larger setback, because it's a parking lot versus a, a building. Makes sense?
Yeah, I was not part of those conversations, unfortunately. I came in to this at the end. The only thing I can think of is it's the vehicular traffic circulation next to single-family homes that was a concern, but again, I wasn't part of that. Sorry about that.
Yeah, no, I, I'm just curious as to...
Sure.
My mind just seemed like that was backwards to me, but...
It would seem that almost anywhere you put it, because of the distinct nature between the single-family access and the non-residential access, you're going to, you'd have to, I don't know that you could meet that separation at any layout, honestly.
Yeah, I don't, you still wouldn't have the 120, you still have the 125-foot issue, but, just a layout to me.
Unless you had a joint access, but then you lose a row of parking, then you, it's very difficult to get access to those three lots, the way that the subdivisions lay out.
Yeah, I get it, I just, I could see people are going to go down that alleyway to, to go to church, and then you're going to have a traffic jam turning around people's driveways. Just, just have a hunch, just, it's just a hunch, Jason, just a hunch.
It's a good hunch.
That's all, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sure signage will become very important at some point. I'm sure signage will become very important at some point.
No, those are, I'm good, I'm not good with it, but I'm, you've answered my questions. Thank you.
Counsel Safford?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, a couple of concerns. First, comments, I'm glad we're going through a development agreement on this. And I'm also glad to see the coordination with the infrastructure. I think you guys did a good job doing that. Couple of concerns I do have, the five-foot setback, is there any way we can maybe take that 15-foot setback, move it a little bit, so there is more room between those buildings? So, I have a feeling that what's gonna happen is the fire, our fire district, I know you've worked with, you've mentioned you've worked with Leake, you know, other fire districts in the area. Have you specifically done anything with Fort Myers Beach Fire District? Because I, you know, they've been in meetings with us, and for them, the bigger is the better for life safety. My other concern with the five-foot setback is, you know, you drive around Florida, and you go to the villages, let's say, and you're like, geez, how is, houses so close? Now, we're doing the same thing here, all the houses are gonna be so close to each other. So, I don't know if there's a math equation where we can maybe get a little bit bigger side setback on those? And it seemed, Jason, on this end, seems like we just created, especially on sterile, we just created four paralle, five parallelogram lots. So, are we gonna be following the parallelogram lot setbacks on these houses?
No. So, any conditions, deviations, all those things run with this property and this project through the developers' agreement?
Okay. So, I guess, then I have one more question after that, but if you could...
Which is why I actually brought up the point about, the code says you can have the three-foot encroachment of the overhang.
Right.
But you can control that or change that through conditions of this process.
Okay. So, thoughts on that?
To directly answer your question, no, I have not worked with the Fort Myers Fire Department, although, as we have kind of brought up earlier, these homes won't be permitted. You won't be able to get a development order permit, you won't be able to get a vertical construction permit without fire sign-off. So, as you go through the permitting process, we start with tables and zoning, and then it works its way through real land design. And when you get to the final development order, if fire has a problem with it, it will be changed. They will not sign off if it is not.
That's good to know. Is there any way we could do a little math, taking off the setbacks on the two streets to give us a little bit more room in between the houses?
This, the internal alleys, or you mean in Connecticut?
No, so like, you got a 15-foot setback off of Connecticut, a 15-foot setback on the houses on Andre Mar, maybe reducing that a little bit, so we can get some more room between the five houses?
The setback on Connecticut is the landscape buffer width. So, that entirety is required for the...
That's my question, is can we reduce that a little bit, so there's more separation between the houses?
One can, and it's in your discretion, you could. I would not recommend it. I believe landscape buffers, perimeter treatments of a planned development are more important to the external, to the public, than internally. Internally, it's within that project, that is, that's theirs.
Just ask for your opinion.
That's, in my opinion, I think the landscape buffer is more important than internal setbacks. In planned developments, I lived in Coral Lakes at one, and there was reduced setbacks on the side, very small, but I never used my side yard for anything. I used my backyard and my front yard.
Okay, fair enough. And Jonathan, I have a question for you, sir. With regard, you know, the one thing about a DA is, things are a little vague, and I, there is a vagueness here of how we're going to coordinate efforts with the church. I don't know, from a, Mr. Yazo, from a code enforcement, I mean, can we, I guess we, there's been some churches in the past, not this church, but it's just been, open season, they do whatever they want, it affects the neighborhoods, it's just, I'm worried that if we don't have some safeguards with that respect, that they can do anything they want. Does that make sense?
It does, and, you know, I don't want to say too much, but the bottom line is, a lot of the reason why we're still standing here not zoned is because some of the issues that have happened in the past with code enforcement issues and other things. And, you know, I can't say anything other than, part of the reason we're doing the development agreement, and part of the reason we've taken all this time through the process was to try to work through as much of the town's issues as we could, and to try to make this as good going forward as we could.
So, I guess my question for the attorney, is there a way we could put a thing in here where we have neighborhood meetings, where we have...
Yes.
Open dialogue, where we have...
I think what you're describing is somewhat of a covenants and restrictions between the property owners of the various lots and the church, that would go into more detail as far as, you know, payment of any type of monthly dues, or, I don't know what is anticipated. I mean, that is part of their real estate transaction, which they haven't really disclosed to us.
That's not really what I was getting, I was getting more at, you know, you get, you have a town hall meeting, not like this, but just with all the neighbors present, you guys, everybody gets on the same page, so things don't get away from one another. Like, they decide, hey, we're gonna do this or that, or we're gonna provide this service, and the neighbors are like, oh, no, you're not. You're not gonna have RVs here again, you're not gonna do this. I just like, I don't want total, I don't want to be more controlling, but at the same time, I want to protect the neighborhood.
Can I ask you a question for more clarification? Are you looking for the meeting before the church opened, or are you looking for a community meeting before we have our second reading? What are you thinking?
I just like some language in there, that there will be ongoing discussions with the neighborhood as we move forward, that it would take a little bit of the vagueness out on who exactly we're dealing with, with the church, just so there's, I'm trying to get rid of the vagueness, and just make sure that the neighborhood's okay with, going forward, there's lines of communication where...
So, does that look like an annual meeting?
Maybe.
Or, I'm just trying to understand, I want to write what you're thinking, but I have to understand what you're thinking, so I need your help.
So, it sounds like perhaps some kind of condition that prior to a special event, that there is dialogue...
Well, special service, too. I mean, again, we don't, I know the hurricane happened, and there's trailers everywhere, but it just...
It is vague. I'm struggling as well, Neil.
Well, and I would say... And I would say this, there were a lot more people at the LPA meeting, and they expressed their concerns, and the conditions actually that the LPA recommended seem to ameliorate the concerns of the community. But if what you want is a community outreach on an annual basis, I think we can do that.
Maybe I'll get the, let my fellow council people weigh in, I'm just...
Are you thinking annually, or per event? As events come up, as conditions change?
I think more services.
So, maybe a monthly?
No, it's just, we're not doing it.
Okay, so like, the church, the church I have, we're gonna have an Oktoberfest. So, they have those kind of events from time to time. I go to Fort Isley. So, they have 30 acres, so it's a little different, but they have bounce houses, and, you know, food, and all that kind of stuff. So, if they have something like that, you want to have an outreach before then?
What do you guys think?
Well, I think they have already, to me, there's already a process they would have to go through to have a special event.
Yeah, I think there's already a process, but I'm just more like, hey, we're gonna open up...
A thrift shop?
Yeah, thrift shop, or...
Food pantry, thrift shop.
I don't know, I'm just...
So, just one thing on that, and Neil can speak to this some, too, but part of the reason why we ended up going through the development agreement was to try to restrict some of these issues that we had heard about from the past, with overnight parking, and housing, and, you know, so there is language in there that addresses many of the issues that you're concerned with, maybe not all, and certainly...
Well, nothing's perfect in a DA, but I just want to make sure for the neighborhood that they're protected, right? So...
Well, yeah, I think, when you say it's in there, but it says services, well, what does services really mean? It's very vague, right?
Yeah, it's vague.
Services could be, I mean, you could look at that as, does that mean I can't have church service? Because that's a service. So, I think breaking out a little bit more as to what service was intended for, I think I read it the way that you intended it, but it's extremely vague, and it could be open to a lot of interpretation.
I don't think we have an objection to that, as long as it doesn't get too specific.
Yeah, and again, I don't want just clamp down on everything, can't do anything, but at the same time, I don't want it, while, whilst, you know, it's gotta be a good balance there. So, those are my thoughts. Karen?
Do you have anything else, Karen?
No, I didn't have anything else, except for the fact that I am concerned about approving any kind of zoning, any kind of move forward with outstanding code violations. This has been an ongoing issue with this property, and I have a problem with it.
Can I speak to that just for a second? I understand where you're coming from. If I was sitting in your seat, I'd probably feel that way as well. But I can tell you, without a doubt, the fastest way to resolve those issues are to get the property rezoned, so that the purchase can move forward, and the property can be redeveloped. As long as it sits in perpetual purgatory, you're gonna have the issues that you're frustrated with. That is, that's a reality.
Well, I see your point, and, you know, between now and potential second reading, there will be a deadline that has to be met for certain things, and I think that'll tell us a lot, in my opinion, on whether or not there's a good faith effort to try to resolve this, even before the next hearing. So, I see what you're saying. We haven't had a good history of compliance, and the 19th is a very hard deadline. It's, we're not gonna get any more extensions, I don't think, nor do we want them. We want to come into compliance with everything. So, between now and a potential second reading, that's gonna tell us a lot, it's gonna tell you a lot, because technically, you're not in charge of it right now, right? So, we'll see what happens on that. But I agree with your sentiments.
Yep. Can I just add one thing? To Jonathan's point, the property's owned institutional now. They can do a church now, except for the fact they don't have the funds. So, the problems that you're experiencing only, your staff wisely recommended the development agreement in an effort to gain assistance in gaining compliance. That's what Jonathan's here to do, is to help them bring it into compliance, but we need the residential component to make all that happen.
Yeah. No, you've done, I got a couple, you know, I have some issues, obviously, with the setbacks. I, I mean, to me, this was the intent of a development agreement, is to do exactly what this project is trying to do. But again, the severe lack of details in a development agreement are very difficult. I mean, it, they're, the 20, I mean, are these houses going to have, is it gonna be a garage door, is it gonna be open underneath? I know you say 20 feet is enough place to park a car, but a Jeep Wrangler's 20 feet long. So, if I pull up in a Dodge Dooley, crew cab, I'm not fitting in a 20-foot driveway. So, now are we gonna have cars? Like, we get complaints all the time, and we know these are gonna be short-term rentals, I'm sure some of them, maybe not all of them. We're gonna be getting calls about cars backing out into the right-of-way there, and now it's putting more pressure on our staff. So, one of the things I have is, is it gonna be a garage? Because we don't have any details, is it gonna be a garage door right at the front where the driveway shows it ends? Or will the driveway start back under the house, let's say, where the square box is for the stairs and the elevator shaft, which would allow plenty of room to be able to pull in? You know, those are the kind of details that I would love to see, that you don't get to see in a development agreement, to alleviate some of the problems we already have, and we know this is gonna create.
So, you know, all that's done on the housing right now is a plan area design, but they are raised, because they have to be for flood elevation. And then, what we show, and what I anticipate, is that there will be parking under the homes, because frankly, there's not much other use for it, other than that.
Right.
So, really, the driveways are really intended for guests, the parking for the residents would be under the homes. But all those things, I understand where you're coming from, and I can't do anything other than say what it will be, but that is the intent.
And, you know, again, I don't want to reinvent the wheel here, I wish that, would have stayed with, my personal opinion would have been to stay with the original layout of the church, having the church more in the center, and the parking lot on the other end, but that is what it is. I agree with Counsel Safford on the side setbacks, if there's something between now and potential second reading, to be able to come up with an idea to open those up. Because a five-foot setback, as we talked about at the beginning, is that from soffit to soffit, or fascia to fascia, or is that from building to building? Is that from air conditioner to air conditioner? What is that five-foot setback? And we understand that you have to go through the fire review before you can do it. We're trying to be proactive on your benefit. We're trying to tell you that, we know this is going to be an issue with the fire department. Nothing against the fire department, they have to do what they have to do. But we're trying to help you in advance, believe it or not, to say, if you could show this to the fire department between now and the potential second reading, and they have no issues with it, that takes away any of the issues that we have, right?
Yeah, it makes our job a lot easier.
So, it's just trying to be proactive. I don't, it bothers me the most when we approve something, and then it gets held up down the line, because of something that's outside of our control, and it's now the town of Fort Myers Beach's fault. Our town manager's getting emails about something that's no longer out in his control, and it takes up more and more staff time. So, we're just trying to help you by getting these answers between now and then, and if the fire department looks at that and says, we don't have any issues with it, I don't have any issues with it.
Fair enough.
I agree, it is, you know, kind of, what did you call it? Planned development, but it's, you know, and to your point, Jason, it is not a separate home, but it's, five foot's not a lot of, not a lot of room. Those are my biggest concerns, that, you know, hopefully you can address if it goes to a second reading. I appreciate the fact that you guys are willing to come back to the plate and try to develop this property, and fix a lot of the issues that the neighbors have had, and the town has had, with the property the way it is. So, I'm excited about the project, I'm excited that you went back to the drawing board and eliminated what you were originally trying to do. And I haven't heard of any complaints, I haven't at least got any emails about what you're trying to do. So, you're obviously on the right path, just trying to help you fine-tune it a little bit, as best we can through a development agreement.
We appreciate it.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No, that's all I had. I echo your sentiments as well. We're trying to help, and we're trying to make this win-win for everybody, and you're definitely on the right path.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Any other questions for Jason? All right. Public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to wish to comment on this matter? If so, please come forward to the podium and identify yourself, provide your address, and whether you were sworn in. Come on up. Phil, good morning.
Good morning. It is, barely. My name is Lori Webster, and I own two homes on Fort Myers Beach, one of which is on Curlew, so I was able to walk here today, and I love it. I'm also a member of Beach Baptist Church. I'm sure that every person in this room can relate to the consequences of Hurricane Ian. The PTSD is real. I never imagined that the phrase, "I can smell that picture," would be part of my lexicon, but here we are. Our church was destroyed by Ian, but our congregation rallied. We helped others while we ourselves were swimming in the same cesspool of post-Ian life. We've supported the community at every turn, while we ourselves were trying to figure out how to be a church community. No one in this room can say that Beach Baptist Church is not a Fort Myers Beach partner. As we tried to figure out where to go and how to get there, two more hurricanes came calling. One step forward, two steps back. And yet, still, we rallied. Hot meals morphed into satellite food pantry. We moved from worshiping in a tent that was battered with each storm into trailers. Still not glamorous by any stretch of the imagination, but better. Now, we're losing those as well. We've been told that next week is our last service in the trailers, and they will be removed. We need hope, we need a plan. We don't currently know where we will worship while we wait for a new church, but we have hope. The proposal before you is our light at the end of the tunnel. While we have an uncertain interim timeline, we would have hope for a future. In the end, it would allow us to continue to worship on Fort Myers Beach and support the community, without absorbing crippling debt. By selling the front part of the parcel to the developer to build homes, our church property can be developed debt-free. This is the dream of every congregation, to be able to focus on giving back instead of trying to get ahead. To focus on what could become of those residential properties, i.e., daily, weekly rental, while every property on the island shares the same potential, is an enormous disservice to an entity that has proved, over and over, that we're here for the long haul, and Fort Myers Beach strong. Please allow the plan to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak of public comment? All right. Seeing that, I'll close public comment. Are there any additional comments from the applicant at this time? No? All right. I'll now close public hearing and request a discussion or a motion from the town council
to approve, approve with conditions, deny with reasons, or a continuance to a time certain. Discussion or a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of ordinance 25-17.
To the second hearing?
Second reading.
Second reading. Got a motion by Vice Mayor Adheral. I'll second further discussion. The only other discussion is, hopefully, you'll work with our town attorney to clear up any vagueness. I think that you've, you've heard today with the development agreement between now and
The second reading?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, your city attorney's been, or town attorney's been really helpful. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other discussion, there's a motion by Vice Mayor Adheral, seconded by Mayor Allers. Vice Mayor Adheral?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Council King?
Aye.
Council Woodson?
I say aye, but I will.
I say aye, but I'll reserve my final at the second reading.
Council Safron?
I, and I as well. I hope you guys take what we've, we've said to heart and have come forward with just a little bit better understanding what we're looking for. So, thank you. Aye.
All right. The motion carries unanimously. We'll see you on the third.
Thank you very much for your time.
Our final public hearing is a legislative agenda item and is a first reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance 25-19. If approved at first reading, a second reading and final adoption hearing will be scheduled for November 3rd, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. or another time identified by town council. This is an ordinance of the town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, amending section 34-232, required hearings of Division 5, public hearings and review of Article 2, zoning procedures and Chapter 34, zoning districts, design standards and non-conformities to require only one public hearing before the local planning agency, the LPA, for special exceptions that only receive like-for-like structures that were existing prior to a natural disaster event. If the decision by eligible members of the LPA is unanimous and the town clerk does not receive a request for additional public hearings before the town council from anyone, including town staff, within 10 days after the LPA decision, providing for codifications, severability, scrivenorizers, conflicts of law, and an effective date. Jason?
No, you read that very well. Thank you. Just a land development code amendment to change the process. We'll probably talk process a lot over the next few months as we tweak the land development codes and all that. But, this is before use for that like-for-like, similar to the variances, process that you created for the variances. And I would challenge you to think of this and even further, going farther in some of these processes if you wish.
I can add a little bit more. I think it was at one of your M&amp;P meetings that you discussed the option that you had to delegate specific land use decisions to the LPA for final agency action. And, at that time, we moved forward with the variances and basically, they could approve variances based on the members present who were eligible to vote. If there was not an objection raised with the town clerk within 10 days, then that would constitute final agency action. And then, that allowed the property owner to go ahead and move forward with their proposed development. This opens up that door a little bit more as far as special exceptions because again, it's kind of a very similar situation that we find ourselves in where the LPA unanimously approves a special exception specifically like-for-like structures, then it comes back to you, so there's a delay period there. So, this proposal is the first reading and just basically expanding that opportunity to somewhat fast-track some of these proposals.
I think it's very good. Any, any suggestions you have besides this, I'm sure we would be more than open to listening to. Anything we can do to alleviate staff time for something that is a like-for-like situation? Which, to me, seems like a no-brainer. Vice Mayor?
I, I think this is particularly appropriate coming up today as we've, we've just affirmed how important the LPA has been since the storm. I commend our town attorney and Jason both for bringing this forward. I was, have been a proponent of this concept of uncontroversial items being, being able to be dealt with at the LPA level. I was told before Ian by our previous town council that that, that just was difficult to do. And, our new town attorney has figured out a way and I think that way has not only served the residents well, the businesses well, but also the town governance structure as well. So, I appreciate this additional step and I, I join with the mayor and look for additional steps as well.
Council King? Questions for Jason?
Nothing.
Council Woodson?
I'm good.
Council Safron?
Yeah, I think anytime. I mean, look at Mr. Nussbaum here. Good thing it was a bye week, huh? Prepare.
And you weren't playing the Browns.
Ouch. Yeah, I think anything that can streamline, reduce costs on their end, speed up the rebuilding process is a win-win for everybody. So, Jason, you know, as Vice Mayor said, if you find anything else that will streamline the process, reduce costs and get us, get shovels in the ground, I'd appreciate it.
We'll push until you push back. How about that?
Yeah.
We'll try that approach.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Public comment. Is there any members of the public who would like to comment on this matter? If so, please come forward to the podium and identify yourself, provide your address and whether you were sworn in.
Hi, Dave Nussbaum, 66 Tennessestra Boulevard. Briefly, I think this is fantastic. I think anything we can do to expedite rebuilding. I can tell you, just to rebuild our tiki hut, which is a classic example, and thank you for the approval, has been a long process. And, anything that can be done for the condominiums, for the homeowners, anyone on this beach recovering, that speeds that process up, I heartily endorse and hope that you push this along and open as many doors as you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else choose a comment, public comment?
Mayor, may I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
So, the process as far as the variances has worked very, very well with the LPA. And I also wanted to mention that their resolutions, which are final agency action, those are available from the clerk on the website.
Very good. All right. With that, I will close the public hearing and I will now ask, request a discussion or motion from town council to approve, approve with conditions, deny with reasons, or a continuance to a time certain.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move approval of ordinance 25-19.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion by Vice Mayor Adheral, seconded by Council Safron. Any further discussion? Vice Mayor Adheral?
Aye.
Council Safron?
Aye.
Council Woodson?
Aye.
Council King?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That motion carries unanimously. Before we move to our administrative agenda, do we, anyone need a comfort break?
Yes.
Okay, we will take a 10-minute break, come back at 11:50.
All right, we're gonna call this meeting back to order. It is eleven fifty-two. We are on to our consent agenda. The first item is a resolution of the Town Council, the Town of Fort Myers-
Administrative.
Administra- what did I say? Oh, I'm sorry, administrative agenda, thank you.
Well, we consent to the administrative agenda.
I pre- well, I appreciate it. A lot of stuff to read. A resolu- this is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving sixteen individual professional service agreement with the following firms, which were negotiated by town staff as directed by the Town Council on August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, in response to RFQ dash twenty-four dash zero-six dash A.D. entitled "Ongoing Miscellaneous Professional Services." One, AIM Engineering and Surveying. Two, Axis Infrastructure LLC. Three, Burt Hill Pollock Craig. Four, CAP Government. Five, Coastal Engineering. Six, MSite Inc. Seven, GMA Architects and Planners. Eight, Graph USA. Nine, Haley Ward. Ten, Hans Wilson. Eleven, Hyatt Survey Services. Twelve, Jezzer- Jezzerknack Group. Thirteen, Johnson Engineering. Fourteen, Jr. Evans Engineering. Fifteen, K2M Design. And sixteen, Rhodes International. Authorizing the Town manage to execute an agreement with each of the top-ranked firms for each category of work within the request for qualifications and which were successfully negotiated and providing for an effective date. Town manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, as directed by the Town Council, the staff negotiated with, to date, sixteen, has finished negotiation with sixteen and thirty-two professional service firms that have been completed and are presented in the agenda for the Town Council approval today.
All right, any questions?
Can I add that at your next meeting, you're most likely gonna have sixteen more? Because there were a total of thirty-two, and we wanted just to make it a little bit easier as far as the processing and getting all the documents.
Sure. Any questions for staff? Counselor Safford?
Not this time.
Counselor Woodson?
I have none, thank you.
Vice Matterhold?
None.
Counselor King?
Nothing.
I do not either. Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash seventy- two-seventy-seven for ongoing miscellaneous professional services?
Still moved.
All right, got a motion by Counselor King.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Safford. Any further discussion? Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Safford?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adherhold?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The next item is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, authorizing and directing town staff to submit a funding request to Florida Department of Environmental Protection for the Estero Island Shore Protection Project, inclusive of beach maintenance, physical monitoring, and biological monitoring, authorizing the use of town funds at a later date to match funding to be received from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and provide for an effective date. Chad?
Good afternoon, Chad Schutz, Town of Fort Myers Beach. So this is the local government funding request. It's an annual program that FDEP puts out for localities to request funding from the state for beach projects. This funding request addresses a lot of the erosion that occurred to Helena Milton. We were hoping for a Hurricane Ian Nicole-type package that we got with the HRRGP, the Hurricane Recovery Reimbursement Grant Program, that was great for us and Lee County. However, that did not come through, so we put those numbers into this funding request, and that is what you see in front of you.
All right, and questions for Chad? Counselor King?
I guess, can you explain, do you expect this to come through, or?
So it's up in the air. State legislation, they allocate about fifty million dollars, and I believe, so the way the LGFR works is they will get all the applications in and then rank all those requests. And I think we're around number thirteen. The state typically appropriates fifty million dollars for that. And what I'm hearing is that, I believe it's Pinellas County, had a sizable request of forty-some odd million dollars, so unless the legislators extend that or make it more to include the lower ranking, the state may not budget for us. But my recommendation to you as staff is to at least be in the game and ask for those fundings. The state may not appropriate for it, but we don't, we won't know if we don't ask.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
No questions. Counselor Woodson?
I have none at this time.
Counselor Safford?
I have none.
So Chad, looks like the overall total we're asking for is just over seven point seven million, is that right?
So that's the total project. I believe the state cost share would be about forty-two percent of that. And then the TDC and the Town would be doing the forty-three and fifteen percent. So we have the interlocal agreement with TDC for their, with their Beach Trust Fund that whenever we implement a project and award a bid, the TDC would honor their ILA with us and provide those funds for us, and then we would provide that fifteen percent. For that seven million would be only order of about a million dollars. But I will say that this is a very conservative, top-end budget based on what we have seen in the market recently with some other truck haul projects.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, is there a motion for Resolution twenty-five-two-ninety-seven?
Still move, Mayor.
Got a motion by Counselor King. I'll second. Any further discussion? Counselor King?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Vice Mayor Adherhold?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Counselor Safford?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Chad.
Thank you.
Next is a request to hold a special event with alcohol on Sunday, October nineteenth, on the beach adjacent to Crescent Beach Park.
Good afternoon now. Brianna Gates with Faithful Weddings. So we have a post-wedding beach party and looking for approval for the open container waiver.
From what time to what time? Looks like it's-
Yes, so the event with guests will be from eleven a.m. to, alcohol will be served until four p.m., but guests will depart at five p.m.
It just says adjacent to-
So we'll be using the beachfront that is in front of the Crescent Family Park.
Got it. Questions for the applicant?
Just some further clarifying information, if it's all right, Mr. Mayor. The, we've also gotten from the planners and information that guests will be transported from a hotel in Fort Myers, dropped off at Crescent Beach Park Bus Stop. Buses will then park off-site until pickup time. Food and beverages service will be provided by licensed vendors. The Twisted Trotter will supply, right?
That's correct.
A full bar bartender and beverages catering will include food items as well.
Are they responsible for all the cleanup? Staff's not gonna have to go behind them, clean all this up?
That's correct.
Any questions for staff or the applicant? John?
None.
Vice Mayor?
None.
Counselor Woodson?
I'm good.
Counselor Safford?
I have to ask why it's such last minute.
We initially were being put on for the September sixth, I think it was, council meeting, and then she, Tracy, rescheduled me until the last one, but I wasn't in town. So this is why, this was the date that they gave.
Well, that's a way better answer than I was expecting, so.
Good.
I'm glad I asked.
I tried to be here a month ago.
Okay, fair enough.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or a motion for the special event? No?
Still moved.
All right, got a motion by Counselor Woodson.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor King. Any further discussion? Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adherhold?
Aye.
Counselor Safford?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. That motion carries unanimously. Next, we have RFQ dash twenty-five dash ten dash A.D. Reject and cancel the RFQ dash twenty-five dash ten dash A.D. Qualification proposal for the Fort Myers Beach Engineering and Architectural Services Bay Oaks Community Pool Rehabilitation Project with cause due to lack of adequate competition as provided in the request for qualifications in Sections two dash four-eighty I twelve and two dash four-eighty H five E of the Town Code, and provide direction to staff to rebid the project. Frankie?
Good afternoon. Frankie Capache, Community Development Director. It was the selections committee's advice to not continue with this, the applicant that we received based on qualifications and the interviewing questions that they, they had. So in conversation with the county, this is a procedure that we'd have to go through and have you formally accept that, that we did not want that applicant on those grounds, so we could continue and move forward. There's a few avenues that we're currently exploring with the county as far as maybe an expedient way of getting out for rebidding or maybe reaching out to prior people that had bid, but, or early in the, the game when we had to have three bids and we only received two, so.
Okay, so you're just looking for us to give direction to reject this?
We, we have to formally reject this bid, yes, so we can move on.
And then just give you direction to go out for rebid?
Yes, sir.
Got it. Any questions for Frankie? Counselor Safford?
Not at this time.
Counselor Woodson?
How long will this whole process take again?
Hopefully it doesn't put us back more than thirty days. In the grand scheme of things, that doesn't really equate to much. We're, like I said, we're working with our county partners right now to see if there's an expedient way to get to that point, so we can close that distance. We'll find out on Wednesday morning, when we have our weekly call with the county.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
None.
Counselor King?
Nothing.
Nothing for me. Thanks, Frankie.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion or motion on RFQ twenty-five dash ten? I will move to approve the rejection and cancel of the RFQ twenty-five dash ten dash A.D.
Second.
And direct staff to go out for rebid?
Second.
All right, got a motion by Mayor Alex, seconded by Vice Mayor Adherhold. Any further discussion? I'm an aye. Vice Mayor Adherhold?
Aye.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
And Counselor Safford?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Last is a request for the reconsideration of a required condition in Resolution twenty-five dash two-ninety-four associated with SEZ two-zero-two-five-zero-one-four-nine for the property located at forty-seven fifty Estero Boulevard was timely submitted to the Town of, on September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five by Brian Campbell on behalf of the Shores of Fort Myers Beach Condominium Association, Inc. The applicant is requesting that the Town Council revise the sea turtle protection condition to allow for peer construction during sea turtle nesting season, subject to specific environmental safeguards. The proposed revision would require the applicant to obtain a permit from the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, FWC, authorizing a marine turtle permit holder to relocate nests within a designated construction corridor necessary for the project. The corridor would be limited to minimum width required for equipment and materials transport. Construction activities would be restricted to daylight hours with daily monitoring of nesting activity by the FWC marine turtle permit holder before work begins each day. No exterior nighttime lighting would be permitted. If nighttime work is needed, the applicant would, would be required to obtain additional authorization and comply with any further conditions. This request seeks a balance, to balance environmental protection with the practical needs of the construction timeline. The applicant did not attend the hearing when the special exception was approved or would have made the request at the time. If Town Council would like to reconsider the matter, a motion should be made to schedule the rehearing regarding the condition at issue. Nancy?
So the matter that's before you today is, at the request of the applicant, which was timely received, whether or not you would be willing to revisit your prior approval, which contained this particular restriction and requirement. So today is really, your requested action is just the scheduling of it.
Of the rehearing?
Of the rehearing, correct.
So, so, if I may, so we're scheduling a rehearing. We're not affirming nor denying we're scheduling a rehearing.
Correct. It is a two-step process.
Okay.
It, it was an easier way to do this than to go back through the whole process and to amend the condition. And I, and I believe the goal is to be the same as what you did today earlier with those conditions.
That's fine. You think he'll show up for the next one?
They're here.
Okay.
Yeah, representative is here for that.
All right, awesome.
Any questions for-
Ideally would be for the twentieth, I guess, if that's possible. Nancy, I don't know if the date is, obviously because of the sea turtle season. She's smiling.
Well, it's the rescheduling date at this point.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So that, if, its agreeable to counsel would be at your next meeting in order to keep the project moving forward.
Okay. Would you like to come up and say something?
Hi, my name is Serena Cantu. I'm an environmental consultant with Hans Wilson and Associates here on behalf of the applicant. And yeah, like Jason said, I was not present during the last hearing, so we just wanted the sea turtle condition to be removed from the special exception approval in order for them to get started with work. We do have an executed field permit from DEP, giving them authorization to start work. So if, if it could be heard in the next hearing, we would, we were trying to expedite this for our client, if possible.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? John?
Nothing.
Vice Mayor? Counselor Woodson?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Safford?
I have a question for Amy. Can I get on the next hearing?
Yeah, especially since they're going to just, we're just gonna copy the materials over from the first or the last hearing.
Okay.
I also-
Oh, go ahead.
I also wanted to add, I saw that they added language in here to obtain a marine turtle permit for the work, but I don't feel that that is necessary. All the work is landward of the vertical seawall that's on the property. So I don't believe obtaining a marine turtle permit from FWC is necessary when we do have state authorization. There's no sea turtle nests in the vicinity either. So if, I guess my question is if that could be-
So that is-
Similar to the other project.
Yes, so basically you're adding that to your request for reconsideration of two items rather than just the one?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chad, did you hear all that? Do you agree with her assessment?
Chad shoots for the record.
Turn the mic on.
Yeah, I'm glad you pressed the button. Chad shoots for the record. I think I heard most of it. I understand it may not be necessary. I would just lay it off to FWC. Whatever FWC, they're the keepers of the rule. If they require a permit in there, or relocation permit in there for, as a part of the FDEP permit, then great. If not, let FWC make that decision.
Fair enough.
And should be pretty straightforward.
All right, thanks, Chad. Are there any other questions for the applicant or staff at this time? Are there any other questions for the applicant or staff at this time? If not, is there a motion to approve or deny SEZ two zero two five zero one four nine?
For rehearing.
For rehearing, thank you. See? I will make a motion to approve, uh, for the rehearing of SEC two zero two five zero one four nine at the earliest possible meeting that the town clerk can manage to handle.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor Alex, second by Counsel King. Any further discussion? I'm an aye, Counsel King?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adherold?
Aye.
Counsel Woodson?
Aye.
Counsel Stafford?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Final public comment. Howie, got anything to say?
Thank you all for everything you do with Fort Myers Beach. Really, I appreciate everybody that sits through this every month, every week.
Twice a month.
On that.
Twice a month.
On that, we're gonna close public comment, Howie. Uh, town manager items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselors, uh, just a few things to, to cover here to, to update the council on. Uh, a reminder to the council and to the public that, uh, um, this coming Friday at two PM at Saint Leo the Great in Benita Springs will be a public here, a public, uh, revealing by, uh, the Bishop of the, um, Diocese of Venice on the plans for rebuilding the Ascension Parish here on the island. Uh, again, two PM Friday, this coming Friday at Saint Leo the Great. Um, we, thanks to our HR staff, we had mammogram bus, uh, here last week, uh, really a great, and great participation, and we really appreciate HR setting that up for our, for our staff, um, especially since, uh, this month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So thank you, and, and would like to acknowledge them for that. I had a, uh, great opportunity, and I'd like to thank the Women's Club for scheduling their, uh, their meeting, uh, in our new town hall here, uh, last week and inviting me to speak. It was a great opportunity for me to meet the board members and the rest of the Women's Club members, uh, and really appreciate that engagement. Uh, an update on, uh, emergency temporary placement permits. So far, we've received approximately fifty applications, we're working our way through those. Uh, the staff is, uh, being very diligent, working through those and communicating with the applicants, making sure that they have everything necessary for, uh, for consideration. So far, I've approved eight, they're a mix of commercial and residential. And, uh, so far, twelve have been denied, uh, and e- either denied completely or sent back, uh, with further questions to the applicants. Really, most of the reasons, uh, for this would be, uh, they have no redevelopment plans that they've shown or demonstrated to, uh, to us. They, it is not their primary residence, uh, the temporary structure is not registered, uh, or it doesn't meet the zoning requirements for the property that it's on. And those are, pretty much, uh, wanted to update you all on those and, and also for the public to know that those are just some of the things, uh, as outlined in the ETPP application itself that are required for consideration for approval. That's all I have in town manager items.
All right, anybody have any? Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
We have one more thing to add to the town manager's items.
That is correct. I stand corrected. Um, we need, we had a, um, a slight mix-up in one of the applicants for, um, for, uh, one of our committees, Cell Cab.
For Cell Cab.
Cell Cab specifically. So, uh, we need to ask the council to, to reconsider, um, that, uh, those appointments and, uh, and bring back, since there was one that didn't make the list today that should have been on the list today. Uh, Amy and Nancy can further discuss.
Yes, we, one of them got inadvertently left off, so we'd like you to reconsider your earlier vote and schedule a re-vote, basically, at your next meeting so that that individual would also have an opportunity for your consideration for, uh, participation.
And that individual did meet the timeline for application.
They did meet the timeline.
So it's not, it's not, not through fault of the individual.
Correct, the next meeting, your next meeting will be on the twentieth and Cell Cab does not meet again until the twenty-third.
And the request for the reconsideration is taking place at the same meeting where you made your initial vote, unlike the last one we just had, which was a prior meeting.
And then the, the name of the other applicant?
Carolyn McAllen.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir. Do you have to act on that, or do we, I have a different question?
Yes, you would need a, a motion to reconsider your earlier vote and to reschedule the appointment to Cell Cab at the October
Twentieth.
twentieth, uh, public meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion, and I think, I think I heard you say Carolyn McAllen, is that right? Carolyn's, uh, husband is the one who, was the person who wrote the book on the mound house, so I think this is certainly worthy of our consideration. All right, got a motion by Vice Mayor Adherold?
I'll second.
Second by Counsel Woodson. Any further discussion? Vice Mayor Adherold?
Aye.
Counsel Woodson?
Aye.
Counsel Stafford?
Aye.
Counsel King?
Aye.
I'm an aye, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Go ahead with your question.
Uh, Mr. Town Manager and, and Madam Town Attorney, I, uh, I continue, as I assure, as I'm sure my colleagues and the rest of this community, to be frustrated with the lack of progress at Key Astero and Sea Great Plaza. I know there are complex, uh, issues that surround both of those, uh, malls, if you, for lack of a better term. And I know there's litigation pending. I know just enough to be dangerous, but I also know that these two, uh, facilities are really hurting our community with respect to office space, incubators for small businesses, medical offices, place to get your haircut, florist, et cetera, small businesses on our island. There's a ver, there's a, there's an extreme shortage of space, and these are in prime locations. And I know there's long-seated tensions between the, uh, ownership and the town, and I wondered if we could give our town manager, assuming that, that the town attorney is comfortable with this, uh, 'cause he is new, and there's advantages to being new, uh, maybe a fresh conversation with the owner of these properties, uh, and to see if we could reach some kind of a settlement agreement, not condoning any of the behavior of the past, but for the good of the order and, and, and for the benefit of getting these properties activated again, I wondered if everybody would be comfortable, including our town attorney, with making another run at, uh, just rebuilding that relationship and seeing if in some kind of a settlement could be arrived at that could foster those, both of those key properties on our island to once again, uh, be fertile with small businesses.
So counsel, um, I have no objection to, um, our town manager meeting with the property owner. Um, my concern would be, however, should the property owner's attorney also be present because of the pending litigation that we have, I would also ask that I also participate in that event. Um, just to put it a little bit in context, um, the status of the case right now is that we do have an order from our special magistrate finding that there was a violation of your code. That has been appealed, uh, by, uh, the owner of Key Astero, and, um, the parties have filed the required briefs. We are simply waiting on the court to, uh, to render a decision on it. That's basically where we are on the status as far as the litigation. Should the matter be amenable to some type of resolution through a discussion, um, we would support that as well. Those are my comments.
Can I also just ask, is, are you saying with this Vice Mayor, are you just talking about the one owner that owns both of these, or what about the furniture store as well, which has basically stopped everything, um, as far as building or doing, it's been sitting vacant and empty for months?
Well, that's a fair question. That, the two properties in question that I referenced, uh, potentially could, could house over a dozen new small businesses. I don't know what the situation is, why that's stagnant on the other, uh, ownership dynamic, but this particular sit, uh, person is in litigation with the town, has been for, I think since I've been on the LPA, and, or had some kind of conflict with the town. And I just thought maybe with a new town manager, taking a fresh approach with our council, with their council, sitting down, working through the issues, if there's a way, obviously, one of the conditions would be to renovate those, those, uh, strip malls, for lack of a better term, plazas, uh, so we can, again, have, uh, uh, options for small businesses that are, that are, you know, we, we really need in so many different capacities to come back. That's, that's all I'm putting forward today, just to take a stab at it, may, it may not bear fruit, but, again, one of the advantages of having somebody brand-new without any, uh, biases or any history with the, uh, the, uh, person that we've been in dispute with, maybe that, uh, along with their family, maybe they could, maybe, you know, Will could work some miracles, I don't know. I just, uh, I just see those properties languishing there, and it's, uh, I think it's really hurting our island.
Well, I'm certainly all for any kind of communication if it, if it works. I mean, uh, there's nothing holding him up from getting people in there now, but if, but discussion nev, that never hurts.
I'm more than willing to give it a shot.
I just wanted to get consent on that.
Yeah. I.
I agree.
Uh, the, the other question I had was, it's one that's been asked, uh, over the last few weeks on social media, and, and I just wanted to just give Will and/or Frankie or, or Jeff an opportunity to respond. And again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not opining one way or the other, just more curious, the, the various dirt piles on the town hall property, what are they and what's the timeline for them to go away? I, I, I'm sure there's a good reason for it, but I just, just from an informational standpoint, just a little detail might be helpful.
Sure, uh, Jeff Hoagie, Community Services Director, Town of Fort Myers Beach. Uh, the, the piles you see were, are leftover from when they started to redo, uh, Bay Oaks, uh, park. So that was additional material that was crushed, or additional material that was down at Bay Oaks Park. So I've been in, in contact with, um, the company that, that did that for us, uh, to see when we're gonna remove them. Our, our goal is to have it removed as soon as we can now. I, I have had initial conversations, so it's just gonna take a little time to get it removed. But I'd say it, it's well on its way, and I know that some of it has already been removed, but I, we'll be getting those out of there, I'd say relatively soon.
Thank you, Jeff. And Jeff, is this, forgive my ignorance, but is this something that someone would, we have to pay to remove, or the, in order to get the materials, they'll remove them for free, or how does it work? What's the?
It's their materials, so they would remove it.
Okay, so it's, they, they're, they're responsible for, for the materials as part of their contract?
Yeah, 'cause part of the contract was to, um, remove any debris that was down on the.
Is there any value in any of those, any of those piles?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's all stuff that someone could buy to either redo, um, you know, some roadways. It's, it's compacted concrete, some of it, so if you put it down, it'd be good for a parking lot or, or whatever it is, so.
Thank you.
Hmm?
Anything else?
No.
Anybody else have anything for the town manager? No? Town Attorney items?
So I have quite a number of items, uh, today, um, and I think Becky Vos is going to join us, um, on Zoom to kind of help me out a little bit. Um, but the first item on your agenda is a proposed settlement agreement. Um, this is the approval of a settlement agreement in the case styled, uh, Parish Kumar, uh, Parish Patel versus the Town of Fort Myers Beach. This is case number two dash, or two colon twenty-four dash CV dash zero zero three five three dash SPN filed in the US District Court of Appeals, or excuse me, the US District Court, Middle District of Florida, the Fort Myers Division, and a copy of the proposed settlement agreement is included in your agenda materials. I don't know, is Becky on the line with us? No, she's not. Well, I can tell you that your settlement agreement is in the packet, and basically the, um, the allegations were that the town basically did not provide, uh, overtime benefits to him, um, and I think he had some other claims as well, and there was no basis to it. Um, this had been lingering for a little bit, uh, quite some time, and so the parties got together and decided that the best would be to go ahead and, uh, discuss the possibility of a settlement. There she is, hi Becky. Um, and, uh, the amount for consideration is in paragraph two.
Yes, I am.
Can you hear us?
Little lag.
I'm, I'm gonna keep talking, and she'll tell me to be quiet in a minute. Paragraph two has your, um, the amount of the settlement is the, um, fifty thousand dollars, and of that, um, there's the division of the payable, um, amount. I do want to emphasize that in paragraph, uh, we did get a release in paragraph four, but in paragraph five, it's important to note that, um, the party, the defendant, is solely, uh, entering into the agreement to avoid the cost of continuing, um, litigation and that there's no admission of, of guilt, uh, or liability on the part of the town, uh, by entering into this, um, settlement agreement. So are there questions? Becky assisted with the development of the settlement, so she's gonna have more detailed information, um, on it.
Hi Becky.
Hello?
Questions for Becky?
I just, uh, before Nancy or Becky, to just, uh, just for those who might be watching and might think this is a little odd, do you want to just explain the concept of the litigation risk to the town? And that's why we're settling, or avoiding, avoiding litigation risk?
Okay. This was a Fair Labor Standards Act case, and those, um, the city, it, even if there were a nominal win, they could win a thousand dollars, essentially, and we would have to pay their attorney's fees. Their attorney's fees were being charged at, I believe it was four fifty an hour, which I believe a federal judge all day long would approve. And it was a very, very complex case that was going to require, um, a lot of depositions, a lot of, um, particularly town employee time. Already, Amy can tell you, she did an unbelievable job compiling documents, and I don't, she could tell you better than, than I could. I looked at all of them, but there were literally thousands of documents. And when I saw the amount of documentation involved and realized that we were going to be responsible for paying the other side's attorney's fees, even if they were just a nominal, um, win. And it is very difficult in these cases to get a complete win, because if you are, it, it's unusual to get a zero verdict. Sometimes, if you hit a total home run, you get maybe a five thousand dollar verdict, but unfortunately, you are stuck paying the attorney's fees. So, um, I talked with Will, um, about settlement, and we went back and forth with the attorney on the other side, and I think that there, um, we were lucky that we were able to settle it early, because I don't think, um, if we would have settled it later, that there would have been much chance to settle it for as little as we did.
If, if I could.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Jim.
You know, please.
Yeah, i- i- if, if I could add, counsel, that, uh, I just want to emphasize, uh, what, what the, the town attorney said, is this settlement, uh, agreement with Mr. Patel is no way an admission of guilt or wrongdoing by the Town of Fort Myers Beach or any member of the staff. By agreeing to this, Mr. Patel agrees, um, that the town bears no fault. Uh, and I want to be clear on one more thing, this should not be interpreted as a reason to question the town's unwavering commitment to our employees. We remain fully dedicated to ensuring that all staff, past, present, and future, are treated with respect, fairness, and dignity. We strive to, to provide an environment where the town can grow, contribute meaningfully, and feel valued. And I'd like to get, well, um, as town manager, I believe in, you know, that we listen to all, we hold, they hold everybody accountable, and, uh, we work with all of our employees to, uh, to make sure that they have the best environment possible.
Thank you both, uh, Town Attorney and Town Manager. Uh, this is, uh, the world in which we live today, I'm sure Karen can attest to this as a former, uh, human resources person. Uh, this seems like very wise, uh, management of litigation and avoiding litigation risk in today's world, uh, as sad as it is, it is a reality and a business decision, and I think it's wisely made.
Counsel King, look, you're leaning in?
Yeah, uh, it's just a sad, in my mind, a sad indictment on the legal system that, uh, we have to settle something just because we need to cut our losses, and, uh, I'll leave it at that.
Counsel Stafford, anything you want to add?
I want to hear from our HR expert.
What do you think, Counselor?
Well, honestly, I've been through more situations like this in my lifetime that I care to even remember. But, um, usually in every case, um, at least coming from Minnesota as I did, it was all pro-employee and against employer. And that in this case seems to be, I mean, I've been brought into the loop and I believe that this is the case with this. And I respect everything that everybody went through and looking at all the details behind it. But unfortunately, it is the way of the world and to cut our losses, and that's a good way to put it. I mean, because we are not admitting guilt to anything and there is no guilt involved. But it strictly is cutting our losses, so we don't have to spend more.
Thank you.
Talisa, you look, you came up, is there anything you needed to add or wanted to add? You look like she wanted to add something.
Hi, Talisa Olivera, Human Resources Director. I just wanted to point out for the record that the agreement that was put in place for Paresh was in May of 2022, before myself or anyone in town leadership was here. And that agreement wa, wa, is what was in question. I, I don't think it was executed, you know, based on H R standards, F L S A standards, and that was the, the challenge. So I just wanted to state that for the record. Thank you.
Did you say of May of 2022? Okay.
Yes, May of 2022.
That keeps on giving. All right, any other, let me ask you a question, Madam Attorney. Is there any requirements for, um, is this just a normal vote, I guess? Are you looking for a vote from us just to?
I believe so.
Just a normal vote?
Yes.
Okay, there's no parameters as far as requirements, like there is with budgetary items? Okay. All right, with that, if there's nothing else, is there a motion for the settlement agreement as proposed by the town attorney?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Counsel Woodson and seconded by Counsel King. Further discussion? I, I just want to add, this is one of those things that I, I understand the whole principle behind it. But a wise person once said to me, you need to vote and be able to go home at night and lay your head on the pillow. And this is one of those votes that, although I understand it's the right thing probably to do morally, and, and everything in my gut tells me that I can't vote for this just because of the way it all went down and the way it all happened. Um, I, I just, to me, to your point, John, I think it just sets a precedent. It just does things that I'm not comfortable with. Like, I can't support it, although I understand it's, that it's the right financial decision for the town. I, I, I can't support the motion just because I, I couldn't sleep at night if I did. All right, is there any other discussion? All right, got it. Counsel Woodson?
Begrudgingly, aye.
Counsel King?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adheral?
Aye.
Counsel Stafford?
Aye.
And I just can't, I have to say nay. Motion carries you now, four to one. Next one?
The next item, um, is one that just keeps coming back. Uh, we had initially, uh, attempted to schedule, uh, actually the executive session. We had to cancel that. Um, at the last meeting, if you recall, we were, um, I did do an announcement for the next or the rescheduled, um, executive session. We had a court reporter, um, little issue that came up last time. And as we were trying to put together, um, the materials, we found that, that we still had a court reporter issue. So I, for the record, I need to go ahead and, uh, read the announcement again. But really, the only change that you're going to see is the, um, the name of the court reporter company. So if I may, I'll go ahead and, and read that. And then, um, as long as you're still okay with the date and the time, um, this one can continue to move forward. Um, so this is my request, uh, for a litigation executive session pursuant to Section two eight six point zero one one eight Florida statutes, to discuss settlement negotiations and strategy related to litigation expenditures regarding the case of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida versus White Sand Properties of Fort Myers Beach LLC. Case number twenty twenty-five dash C A dash zero zero four two six one in the, uh, Twentieth Judicial Circuit, Lee County, Florida. The execs, executive session will begin at three P M. on October the twentieth at Fort Myers Beach Town Hall, sixty-two thirty-one Estero Boulevard, Fort Myers Beach, Florida, three three nine three one. Persons attending the executive session include, um, Mayor Dan Allers, Vice Mayor Jim Adheral, council members John R. King, Scott Safford, and Karen Woodson, Town Manager William McCanny, Town Attorneys Nancy Stuprich, Becky Vos by Zoom, Chloe Bearman, and Paul Waters by Zoom, and a court reporter from Esquire Deposition Services to be announced prior to the commencement of the executive session. The executive session will last approximately one hour. Um, I also wanted to note that at the last meeting, uh, Councilman Safford indicated that he will have, um, a conflict of interest participating in the actual, um, executive session. However, I don't think you have a conflict, uh, just participating or, or approving the, um, the time of it. Um, also, one more thing, on Friday, we did receive a copy of the, um, answer and a counterclaim from White Sand Properties of Fort Myers Beach LLC. And so, uh, because of the counterclaim, we will probably, um, be discussing that at the executive session as well and our strategy. Um, because we, as the town, will be defending that. Um, we may have assistance from F M I T., but that's not one hundred percent certain, so I'll defer to Becky, who is our litigation expert, if I misstated anything. There she is.
You're on mute, Becky.
I don't think you misstated anything.
I talk a lot, you know that.
That's, lawyers do that.
So you just need a?
Yes, so just if you guys are still okay with having it on the twentieth at three P M., um, just, uh, consensus would be fine.
Certainly.
Consent? Consent?
Can we say three P M. or immediately following whatever our council meeting is at that time?
That's a good question. Probably got to pay for the court reporter then.
No, I think we, I think staff could make, they can.
Yeah.
I think you could probably.
Well, the problem would be that if your regular meeting ended at, say, twelve o'clock, then people wouldn't know to come at twelve o'clock because it says three o'clock or, yeah.
So we just have to come back?
Yeah.
No matter what, okay.
Or, or could we, worst case scenario, if it did for some reason run until three o'clock, could we recess the meeting, take up the special session and then come back?
Yes, yes, you would be required to do that, um, because we've announced it at three, three P M.
Got it.
Okay.
Yeah, we have it.
And I also want to add that, um, the scheduling, um, there is a, um, hearing before the Special Magistrate on October the twenty-first, uh, to discuss or to request authorization to foreclose on an additional lead. Um, so that'll be, um, we won't be talking about that at that time. However, strategically, it, it's to the town's benefit to, um, to have this meeting on the twentieth.
Understood. You got consent from all the council members. Oh, did I ask Scott? I guess I didn't.
Yes, you have my consent.
All right.
So the next item is, uh, Resolution twenty-five dash two nine six. This is, uh, for your approval, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, initiating the conflict resolution procedures provided in Chapter one sixty floor, four Florida statutes with the School Board of Lee County regarding a material breach of that certain interlocal agreement dated May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, between the Town and the School Board of Lee County as adopted by the Town in Resolution twenty-three dash forty-five, directing compliance with the Governmental Conflict Resolution Act in Chapter one sixty-four Florida statutes, authorizing the Town Manager to provide notice to School Board, uh, of Lee County Superintendent Denise M. Carlin of the initiation of the conflict resolution process, including the date and location for the conflict resolution meeting, and providing for and, and providing an effective date. So this resolution is the one, um, that was provided to you earlier this morning with, uh, striking inserts regarding some requested changes by the, uh, citizens group or, or the parents, as, uh, Mr. Van Ness mentioned earlier.
The ad hoc committee.
Yes, the ad hoc committee, correct. Um, and I don't have any, I don't think Becky does either, any objections to any of their proposed changes. Um, if you are in agreement, we would be asking for, um, a date, time, and location, and who you would want to be present at that meeting.
Okay. So you want to, uh, first, do you, do you have to take a vote on this resolution, Nancy or Becky?
We do need to vote on the resolution.
Do we need to set the details first as far as date and attendees versus?
I think so. We do have some, um, blanks in the resolution that we would want to fill in. Uh, that resolution would be provided to the school board, so they would know.
If we can't figure out the dates and the times right now, we can go ahead and just pass it as is and direct the Town Manager to fill in those appropriate times, once he has figured out what the appropriate times are.
If I could start with the low hanging fruit on the blanks, uh, I feel very strongly that we have this meeting here at our brand new Town Hall meeting. I know my colleagues and myself and many parents and concerned citizens have driven the hour and fifteen minutes out to the Lee County School District for God only knows how many meetings that have most recently borne a little fruit that I think that, uh, to have them come here would be of great convenience, most importantly, to our parents and kids. And, uh, and I would feel strongly that the meeting location be here in our beautiful new Town Hall chamber.
I agree with that.
I totally agree. And if we're talking about who should be there, I mean, Vice Mayor Adheral has had the most consistent meeting information, I think. With anything, I'm not sure if we can have more than one. And I think if we have more than one, it should be Vice Mayor Adheral and then Mayor Dan Allers, um, along with Town Attorney and anyone else who needs to be involved. But, um, and I would, I would think that that would also be the Deputy Town Manager.
So as far as multiple, um, participation by council members, as long as we advertise it, um, as a public meeting, it, it's not a problem.
I, I don't have any, yeah.
So that's fine.
Fine by me.
I think the more, the more of us, the better.
I think, I think you're, you're spot on with that. We've both have had lengthy conversations with the School Board Superintendent and Board Members, where I haven't been involved because he's been there or vice versa. Um, as long as Becky and Nancy don't have an issue with, with us both being at there, I'd, I'd be happy to be there.
Okay. Um, and so a date and the time, I think Becky, I heard you say we'll defer to Will.
Before we do that, could we just get a sense, uh, just from your legal, uh, parameters? Is with this, is there, do we have to give them X amount of time notice? In other words, does this need to be in October? Would it be in November? Can you at least give us a parameter of when, sort of procedurally, what would be the expectation of when that date might be?
So the earliest, um, so what will happen, um, based on Florida statutes after, should you pass this resolution? Um, we do have a five-day period to provide a more detailed, uh, letter to the superintendent, advising her that you did adopt the resolution, advising her of a date, time, and place. Um, subsequent to that, there is a ten-day period that the, um, School Board has to respond to our request and also, um, file their own request for a conflict resolution.
So are you looking at?
Probably fifteen days. Uh, I would say something after fifteen days after today, if you wanted to, um, calendar days.
I think it's more powerful we actually include a date and a time. And Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you have your calendar handy.
I do.
Uh, but, but I was thinking, uh, just to give everyone the time they need to, to get organized, um, I was thinking potentially that November third in the afternoon, because we know we have a town meeting on the third. Uh, then we know the mayor and I will be here, uh, and obviously staff will be here. And, uh, if it's later in the afternoon, maybe some parents can come by from the ad hoc committee or other interested parents. But I'm just, just throwing that out as a starting point, uh, maybe that November third in the afternoon. As we've already kind of set our day aside for the town meeting. What do you think, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, that's fine, or sooner. I mean, the twenty-third or the week of the twenty-seventh through the thirtieth works for me, or November third. I'm flexible.
I love the idea of doing it on a town meeting day where I've known, I've kind of set the day aside.
Okay.
Um, but we could do it on the twentieth in the evening or, or later in the day. I don't know how long that executive session will go. An hour? So we could do it at four o'clock on the, on Monday, or on Monday, the twentieth.
Do we know when the School Board has their meetings?
I think that the twentieth is only going to be nineteen days, I think.
Oh, maybe we, maybe we're better off with the third.
It was more like fourteen minutes.
Give you a little time to do what you need to do with that letter.
I'm fine with the third.
So I've also been advised by, um, Jason Green that, uh, that is our day for the comp plan. Uh, do you want to comment on that as far as agenda management?
That's going to be a long one.
Everything that ha, happened today, um, will also be on that agenda.
Yeah, so we're trying to limit that agenda.
Are you talking about on the third, Jason?
Yeah, the third is supposed to be the comp plan and the impact fee.
Oh, and then everything from today.
And everything today, yeah.
I, I could, uh.
Can you do anything in the last week of October?
I could, uh, I'm just not going to be here for part of that time. I could do it on the twenty-first.
On the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth or?
Yeah, I'm going to be gone.
You're going to be gone, okay.
Then maybe we just do it on the sixth after the M and P meeting.
Yeah.
Does that work?
The twenty-first, we have the, uh, code enforcement hearing on White Sand.
First code enforcement hearing. Let's go, yeah.
And what about November sixth?
November sixth, I, yeah, I may be calling in for that M and P meeting. That's my challenge.
We also have the strategic plan meeting that day.
What about Wednesday, the fifth?
I, I'm fine on the fifth.
Well, how does your schedule work? Will?
November fifth looks good and there's no school board meetings that, that week either.
In the afternoon, we have D O A magistrate that morning.
Is it D O A or?
Well, well, we have special magistrate in the morning, but.
We could do afternoon.
Afternoon on the fifth?
Afternoon on the fifth.
Let's do early afternoon on the fifth.
And you'll let us know time whenever, or do we set a time now?
We, if you could set a time now, it puts it in stone and.
One o'clock?
One o'clock.
Okay.
One o'clock on the fifth. Can just procedurally, for those parents who might be watching, in a mediation structure such as this, would the parents or the interlocal committee parents be able to participate? What, how does it work procedurally? Is there a public comment? How does, what, what, what happens procedurally in this mediation in terms of outside involvement? Is it, I know it's, is it public, first of all?
Yes, it is public. And that, that is really the difference from all these other meetings that have been happening, um, somewhat with individuals with, in strategic positions. Um, but this will bring that discussion, uh, into the public realm. As far as the limits of the public participation, I, I need to look into that.
What? Because it's going to be public, can the school board essentially tell us that they, they don't want this meeting? Or are they going to be required by state statute to have to have this meeting based on what we're potentially approving right now?
They will have to participate, but the timing of it, they may say that they already had something scheduled for then, or they can't get their act together in that quickly. So I think there's. So I think there's possibly going to be some flexibility. There needs to be some flexibility with the time, but they are under an obligation to, you know, take this seriously and actually go through the process.
I think, I think if we leave some flexibility with the time, like Becky's suggesting on that day, there is one thing on the school, on, there is a, on the School Board calendar, a special committee labor management meeting that Dr. Kohler says normally the Superintendent does not participate in, but we, I wouldn't, that's not up to us to decide. It could be something where they would say, "We can't participate," and that's at 2:00 in the afternoon. So that, you know, if we leave it open where the date and maybe a time that works for both of us could be worked out.
Becky, has it been your experience in these types of situations, when municipalities are in conflict, for lack of a more diplomatic term, who serves as the mediator? And is it binding arbitration, or how does it work procedurally?
No, okay. This first meeting is essentially, we're there to negotiate, and after that, we can have a mediator, which it should, there should be a mediator involved, unless, it would be wonderful if everything could be resolved at the first meeting. But I will tell you, about 20 years ago, 25 years ago now, I was a certified circuit court mediator, and a lot of my mediations were mediating these types of disputes. And when you were asking, how much participation can there be with regard to, you know, at the first one, and at the second one with the mediator of the public, it really, it depends upon just how it flows. And if the elected officials want to have participation from the public, they can't take it hostage, but usually, that would be allowed.
Very good.
But I've done a bunch of them, and I don't, I can tell you that not, I don't know that I ever did two that looked just the same. You know, it just depends on the public bodies, you know, how the subject matter, you know, how it all shook out. So it'd be interesting how it will flow.
I would be remiss if I didn't take a minute to say, particularly since Item D is the VOS Law Amendment Resolution, renewing your contract, I can tell the public definitively that our Town Attorney, at least part of the wonderful pair of Town Attorneys and team that we have, spent her weekend talking to wonderful concerned parents who are on the ad hoc committee, seeking their input, putting their concerns in language into the resolution, talking to all the various parties involved, from the school's perspective, and doing all of this over the weekend, on Sunday, and in preparation for our meeting today. So, and that's, that is par for the course from the legal council that we have had since Hurricane Ian.
All right. Do you need us to vote on this resolution, then, Nancy? Based on the times, we need to adjust the times, or just keep it at that for now? I'm fine with keeping it for the November 6th at 1:00.
November 5th at 1:00, and then we can work it out after this.
So November 5th at 1:00, and participating would be the mayor and the Vice Mayor, and it's at Town Hall?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. So motion to approve the resolution with those items.
And I'm sorry, just one, just procedural question, Becky, would that be something that the town would broadcast?
Yes, definitely, it could definitely be broadcast.
Just for the public to have greater access?
And I think that's a good idea, because the whole idea, when Nancy and I were talking about how this, you know, the idea of bringing this resolution to you, we need to get all this in front of the public. When Will had, I think he had just been there maybe a week, when we had a meeting with the School Board, and it was behind closed doors, it was, I didn't believe it was satisfactory at all, and I don't believe he thought it was. You know, this needs to get out there, you know, in front of the parents, in front of the public, in front of the voters, frankly.
Thank you, well said.
So I'd encourage it to be livestreamed.
Well said.
I would just add, for the record, Becky, thank you, but that was a meeting with the school superintendent, not with the board, but just, that she's referring to. Just for the record, Becky.
Definitely, definitely, it was with the school superintendent.
All right. I will gladly make the motion to approve the resolution, as amended with dates and times and attendees.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Allers, seconded by Vice Mayor Adherhold. Any further discussion? I'm an aye. Vice Mayor Adderall?
Aye.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
And Counselor Safran?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And then your final.
So the next item is Resolution 25-295, the VOS Law Amendment. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, amending the agreement for Town Attorney services with the VOS Law Firm, as requested by a letter from the firm dated July 8, 2025, to increase the monthly fee for legal services, authorizing the mayor to sign the amendment, and providing for an effective date.
All right. Anyone have any questions? It's pretty straightforward in there, I don't know if anybody has any questions for staff or for Becky or Nancy? John?
I have no questions.
Vice Mayor Adderall?
I'm going to continue on with the love fest that I was just doing a minute ago. I have had the privilege of serving in senior levels at the federal and state level. I have worked with some of the finest law firms in Indiana, on municipal and governmental matters. And I would just say that our Town Attorney, I'll use the word "team," because it is a team of attorneys in this law firm. I would just say, it's difficult for the public to see what we see behind the scenes. Not only have they more than covered their fees in terms of various litigation that they've been involved, evolved in on behalf of the town, but what I think the public doesn't see is their dedication to Fort Myers Beach, the incredible experience that they have as professionals, the demeanor and attention to detail that they have. I'm amazed, and I think this will be a piece that'll be difficult to ever have the public explain, how much this town, especially post-Ian, has saved as a result of their council. These would be litigation that was never filed, because mistakes were caught, advice was given, advice was heated by the town, de-escalation was utilized with potential litigants, their strategy, their, again, just, their whole approach to service, to me, has been exemplary, and I'm thankful for, that we made the change after Hurricane Ian. I commend those that helped us to make that change, and I am so thankful that this is the firm that we ended up with, because I think the town has been very well served.
Yeah, very well said. I'll just piggyback a little bit. I've had the luxury or the ability to sit in mediations with both our previous attorney and firm, and our current firm, and to tell you, there is a night-and-day difference between the preparation, the amount of commitment from the entire staff at the VOS Law Firm that is put into these mediations was quite remarkable. And the way they kept it professional about the facts of the case, and not a so much personal part of it, to me, is just, it's not even close. And the amount of time, to your point, Vice Mayor, that they have spent in the background unwinding contracts and things that were so far out of whack, that the people that have been in municipal business for a long time can't understand how that was, how things operated. But you have my full support, your team is exceptional.
Counselor Woodson?
Yeah, I'll just add to that, for the public, I mean, I think when you were hired, you were given a pile of things that had either gone, just set aside, not dealt with, unwarranted, whatever it may be. In the past, whenever we've had any kind of legal disputes, we paid an hourly rate for, in addition to that contract for our attorney, and...
Even phone calls.
Even phone calls, every time we talked to them, which with VOS is not the case. And so I'm, I would even probably go on a limb and say, "You lost money with us the first year," but I won't say that far, but Becky's agreeing with me. But I am in full support of this.
Counselor Safran?
Well, there's not much more to add. I want to thank you, echoing what Counselor Woodson says, I, having been on the LPA, not on the Town Council, but just seeing the night-and-day difference, you know, and you get what you pay for, and I think what we're getting is a Ferrari, not a...
Ford pickup?
Well, I'm not going to disparage any other make and model, but I think, I think it's money well spent.
Mayor, just since you asked for a question, I didn't have any questions, but I wholeheartedly agree with what my peers have said. I can't thank you enough for all you've done for this town. It's very apparent how important this is to you, as much so, if not more so, than we sitting here ourselves. So thank you so very much, and I too will support this.
All right. With that, is there a motion to approve Resolution 25-295, the VOS Law Firm Amendment?
So can we say something?
If you want to.
I'm going to start, Becky. We love being here, and we really hope that we can continue and have a long-term relationship with you. It's been really personally satisfying, enlightening, to see the transformation of the town, and also the resilience, not only with our elected officials, but also with the public. And it just gives us a lot of strength to move forward. So Becky, you want to add?
Y'all are wonderful to work with as an elected body. I couldn't ask for a better Town Council to work with. Nancy and I talk about it often. We're extremely, just have to pinch ourselves that we are the Town Attorney here. And in your staff now, I mean, hopefully, there won't be the turnover that there has been, but the people who are there now are wonderful, and we just thoroughly enjoy working with you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. I would normally make the motion, but I am taking an unusual tact in encouraging John and Karen to make this motion, since their addition to this body helped make the change in attorneys possible.
Yeah, got us into some trouble, too, but I'll move Resolution 25-295.
And I'll second.
Got a motion by Counselor King, seconded by Counselor Woodson. Any further discussion? Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Counselor Safran?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adherhold?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, that motion carries unanimously. Anything else, Nancy or Becky?
Thank you.
No, I don't think so. So council member...
Yep. Okay, if you're done, then we'll go to council member items and reports. Counselor King?
Yeah, I've got an award here that the Murph Chair left, Marine and Environmental Resources Task Force Award is given out monthly, but there was actually never an award. It was just all verbal. But the Friends of Little Estero Island have pitched in and created this award, and the committee needs permission from the council to use the Fort Myers Beach Estero Island logo on it. It's very, very nice. I'll pass it around, so everybody can take a look at it, and that's what I've asked to do.
Very cool. Very three-dimensional.
Cool.
Is that a, just parliamentary inquiry, is that, would consent be adequate for that, or do you need a formal vote?
So we have mountains and silver waves.
Consent should be fine.
Consent.
Yeah.
Scott?
Consent.
Counselor Woodson?
I'll consent.
Got your name as consent?
Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
Vice Mayor Adherhold?
All of my items were covered under the Town Manager and Attorney Items.
Okay. Counselor Woodson?
I have nothing.
Counselor Safran?
I'm good, thank you.
I just want to take a second to, I didn't fully clarify what I wanted to really say in regards to the settlement agreement. My no vote was by no means a reflection on staff, current or previous staff. As we heard from T'Lisa, this contract was in place before the storm. To me, it's just, hopefully, one of the final pieces of legislation we'll have to deal with from prior storm contractual issues, but I just wanted to make sure it was on the record that my no vote was not a reflection of staff or anything that the staff has done. It's just the principle of it, I just couldn't support. So that's all I have under my items.
Well, Mayor, I know that those viewing online will not find me remotely funny, but whether you're a fan of the Crystals or Sean Cassidy, let's do the do-run-run and move on to adjourn.
Okay, motion by Counselor King. Is there any objection? We are adjourned at 1:06.